Good morning. The City of Boston zoning board of appeal hearing for August 23, 2022 is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March 2023. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being live streamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout, unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. Order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project. That is those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Again, for those of you connected by telephone, press star nine to raise and lower your hand and star six to unmute yourself. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then can provide the comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called or the meeting host will not know when to call on you at the appropriate time. These instructions will be repeated throughout the hearing. I will make a point right now of saying thank you to all of everybody who offered comments to the board via email. We see that we have a lot of projects today, or a number of projects today, where there is, you know, lots of opposing positions on a specific project. So I recommend in the time prior to your having to present that you decide which members of either side, support or in opposition gets to present because we will be limiting comments to five people. This will exclude elected officials and representatives of elected officials. So I'm giving you a heads up right now, okay? So let's take a roll call. Mr. Fortune?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. Mr. Ehrlich?
Here.
Ms. Dong?
Morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. Mr. Regiro?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Mr. Robinson?
Good morning.
Ms. Panado?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. And may I ask each board member to put a tag on identifying yourself as a board member? BPDA representation from Mr. Hampton?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. And BTD representation from Mr. D'Amico?
Present, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. D'Amico. Mr. Fortune, it's all yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call the first extension, calling DOA 104342521 Shepherd Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with business address of 11 Beacon Street here for an extension.
Thank you, Mr. Drago. Regarding 21 Shepherd Street, the board originally granted its relief on October 21st of 2020 and it remains valid until October 21st of 2022. COVID tolling does not apply because this relief was granted after the start of the COVID state of emergency in March 2020. The applicant now requests its first one-year extension. I recommend that the board grant this extension if it determines that it's appropriate under the circumstances.
And this is a request for an extension until 2023?
Yes, Madam Chair.
So this is 8/23/23? Is that the request?
October 21st, Madam Chair.
And 21. Okay. May I have a motion as such?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Fortune?
Aye.
Ehrlich?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Regiro?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Panado?
Aye.
Arajo is also in support, so motion carries. Good luck.
Madam Chair, can we just make it clear that it's October 21st of 2023? Whoever does make that motion, that they make it very clear.
Okay. State the date, in other words. Thank you.
Thank you. Following the next case for extension, calling DOA 667111, 151 Liverpool Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, my name is Tony Luchesi. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Croketis and Bluestein, 600 Atlantic Avenue in Boston, representing City Point, Liverpool.
Thank you, Counselor. Regarding 151 Liverpool Street, the board originally granted this relief on May 26th of 2017. The board has subsequently granted three extensions of relief set to expire on August 25th of 2022. Although the second extension was unnecessary, the third extension covered all applicable COVID tolling. So I recommend that the board confirm for the record that the prior extensions covered all applicable tolling. The applicant now seeks an additional extension because of the circumstances surrounding the difficulty of permitting their project. I recommend that the board grant that extension if it determines that it's appropriate under the circumstances, keeping in mind that it's the only applicant's third necessary extension.
What's the termination date? Is from 8/23/22?
It's set to expire on August 25th of 2022.
Okay, so the request is for 8/25/23. This is just a note to the attorney. Can you please make sure that this project proceeds? It's been on the books for quite a period of time and this board does not give indefinite approvals. So please do what you can to encourage the applicant to proceed on this.
We understand that, Madam Chair, and we actually have obtained a foundation permit. So the plan would be to start on the foundation straight away.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, motion for a one-year extension with an expiration date of 8/25/23.
Is there a second?
Second.
Fortune?
Aye.
Ehrlich?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Regiro?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Panado?
Aye.
Arajo is also in support, so motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling the last extension, calling DOA 92883628 Monument Square. Name and address for the record, please.
All right, this one will be a stand here. Let me just call 857452. Are you here for this proposal? No. Jeff calls?
There, Mr. Harris on?
Yeah, I'm right here. Can you hear me now?
Name and address for the record, please.
Sorry, Jeff Harris, 28 Monument Square.
Regarding 28 Monument Square, the board originally granted this relief on September 20th of 2019 and it granted first extension of this relief until September 20th of 2022. However, that extension was unnecessary because of COVID tolling applies. With tolling, the release does not expire until December 26th of 2022. I recommend that the board confirm the expiration date for the record. The applicant also requests an extension until September 20th of 2023. I recommend that the board grant that extension if it finds it appropriate under the circumstances, keeping in mind that it's the applicant's first necessary extension.
Make a motion to extend until September 20th, 2023.
Second.
Fortune?
Aye.
Ehrlich?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Regiro?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Panado?
Aye.
Arajo also in support, so it's been extended to 9/20/23.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, a board final arbiter, calling DOA 102969435 Brookley Road. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, members of the board. My name is Matt Henze. I'm a development consultant on behalf of the owner entity Stonely Brookley LLC.
So tell us why you're here?
I'm here because the Boston Inspection Services Plan Reviewer recommended that we change the permit application for the project so that it's consistent with the requirements of the fire department. The entry of the design is on Stonely Road. The original permit, which we inherited from a prior developer, was submitted as 35 Brookley Road. So this is a request to clean up, correct, and put the proper address on the permit application.
What's the proper address for the record?
So the proper address will be 10 Stonely Road. You made the claim.
Okay, 10 Stonely Road and front doors face 10 Stonely Road?
That is correct.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. No questions on the proposed proposal.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Fortune?
Aye.
Ehrlich?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Regiro?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Panado?
Aye.
Arajo also in support, so motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
I'm going to call the 930 hearing for any deferrals or withdrawals, 930 cases only. If you can give me the address first, you are deferring or withdrawing a 930 case.
67 Appleton.
Thank you, Counselor. For the record, calling DOA 133979867 Appleton Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Richard Linz, 245 Summer Street East, Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. We're requesting a deferral. We have some plan updates to make and get reviewed with ISD, so we're asking for the referral to allow us time to complete that.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Second.
Fortune?
Aye.
Ehrlich?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Regiro?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Panado?
Aye.
Arajo also in support, so motion carries. The date, please?
You have a date of October 4th at 11:30.
Also, 32 Hobart, Mr. Secretary.
I'm sorry, say that again, Counselor?
32 Hobart.
Okay, thank you. For the record, calling DOA 1351215, 32 to 32C Hobart Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, good morning again. Richard Linz, 245 Summer Street East, Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. Madam Chair, we're requesting deferral. We had some scheduling issues with the EAIA, with their summer schedule. We didn't want to have an opportunity to present the most updated plan one last time. I believe they were able to accommodate us at their September meeting and therefore just asking for a brief deferral to allow us to do that.
So this tends to be a historic problem. This is a notice to community groups that we are going to be slowly approaching Thanksgiving and Christmas and we would request that you front load your projects so there is not a reason for applicants to request deferrals or the board to be scheduling and then deferring. In this case, may I have a motion, please? Do we have a motion? Yes, may I have a motion, please?
No, we didn't have a motion.
Motion to defer.
Second.
Fortune?
Aye.
Ehrlich?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Regiro?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Panado?
Aye.
The date, please?
You have a date of October 4th at 11:30.
And also for the record, to say that Arajo is also in support. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the 930 cases? Hearing none, I'll call the first case. Calling DOA 127638242 West Eagle Street. This is adding a walkout deck in dormer, violates Article 53, Section 12. The height is excessive in Article 53, Section 52, roof structure restriction. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, everyone. Jason Kim, 42 West Eagle Street.
So tell us what you're proposing to do?
Yeah, the proposal is to add a roof deck in dormer to access our unit.
And is this a one-family or a two-family? What is it?
The building is a multi-family, but the roof deck is exclusive to the unit.
So this is, is it a two-family? Let me just go back. So it's a three-family dwelling. It's a two district and it's a three-family dwelling and you have the topmost unit? Okay, and tell us what the occupancy of this proposed dormer would be?
Sorry, I don't know what that means.
Madam Chairman, it would be private use for the owner.
Who is speaking?
Sorry, this is Eric Zacherson, context, 9 Sackville Street in Charlestown. I'm the architect.
Okay, so it would be, I'm sorry, what would it be again?
Private occupancy for the roof, for the top unit tenant, Jason and his wife.
Okay, and does that look like it's, what is the access to the roof deck?
So there is an existing unused attic space and because of that configuration, we're kind of extending it into kind of half of the headhouse in order to achieve the access to the rear unit, to the roof deck for the rear.
So you know how far we are of headhouses. Was there any other option that you could conceive of?
There was, we could, we looked at a way of putting the hatch on the sloped surface of the existing roof, but it actually wouldn't open far enough. It would kind of create a situation where you'd have to duck under it, unless we created a custom hatch that would work with that or remove a portion of the roof and put a hatch within the existing attic space.
Okay, let's see, and this unit will have four bedrooms?
Yes.
Okay, and what's the dimension of that deck?
The deck is 15 feet 6 inches by 19 feet 3 inches.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are fine. You know, I was wondering the same thing. The roof does naturally slope back toward what they're trying to do, so I was interested to know also if the hatch is conceivable. It seems like you could build a knee wall and maybe raise up a hatch and make it work. Is that not correct? To create more headroom to get up there, but it would be in line with the slope of the existing roofline?
Right.
We should revisit that. The ones we looked at did not open far enough to kind of...
I don't have a problem with the roof deck necessarily, but I think maybe we could reconsider the roof, or the access point. But other than that, no questions for me.
Any questions from the board?
Just to reiterate, I mean, the drawing on the left there, it looks like the top, the headhouse is actually higher than the high point of the roof. So I mean, we really don't want to extend the height of the building.
Yep.
Okay, is anybody here to speak, either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board. Natalia Benitez is with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. An Abutter's meeting was held on April 12th of this year. Noah Abutter was in attendance for the meeting. The applicant also met with the Eagle Hill Civic Association and the association voted to support the project. But they did say that they would like to see a hatch instead of a headhouse. At this time, our office would like to refer to judgment to the board. Thank you. Does it try to have no raised hands at the moment?
Give a note. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with, to provide, to provide, I guess, the removal of the headhouse for a hatch and BPDA design review, which can make sure that that happens.
For a second.
Second.
Fortune?
Aye.
Ehrlich?
Aye.
Dong? Regiro?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Panado?
Aye.
Arajo, also in support. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Following in the next case, calling DOA 128205571 Willowood Street. This is a change of occupancy from a two-family to a three-family. Construct new dormers on the third floor. Violation to Article 60, Section 40, Arch Street Parkings insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, the side yards insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, the lot area is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, the lot width is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, lot frontage is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, the foyer ratio is excessive. And Article 60, Section 9, the use of open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record.
Hi, Kristen, are you here for this case? Sophie, you want to meet yourself?
Yeah, hello?
Yes.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, put your name and address on the record and tell us what you're proposing to do.
Okay, my name is Kristen and I'm representing 71 Willowood.
And what's your last name and who are you affiliated with?
Kristen Lewis and I'm the owner of 71 Willowood Street.
Okay, excellent. Go ahead, tell us what's being proposed.
So we have a two-family at 71 Willowood that we would like to turn into a three-family. So on the third floor, there was an additional three set rooms upstairs and with a separate entrance from the front of the house. And then we wanted to, we started work to turn it into a three-family.
Okay, so tell us what the floor to ceiling height is and if you are, where are the dormers proposed, for the rear or the front of the building?
So we ended up not using any dormers. So we ended up doing it to like what was already existing before. So we didn't add any dormers.
So tell us what's the floor to ceiling height then?
Give me one second. My architect should have been on this call, so I'm not sure if he's logged in.
What's his name?
Fred Manigat.
So those dormers being shown are not part of the proposal anymore?
They're not part of the proposal anymore, so, because when we, when we got the permit to do work, we ended up not meeting the dormers.
So does this mean you've already started work on this?
Yes.
Is it complete?
It's actually where we got all the rough and then we're actually waiting for final inspection.
Okay, did you pause construction while this was during, while this was proceeding through its appeal process?
We kept on going, but like I said, you know, we just were at the ending of everything, so we're just waiting for final inspection.
So that's a very risky thing for you to do, to proceed, because should we deny this, then there would be no third unit in there and you would be out. So, but in the meantime, tell us what the floor to ceiling height is, what the square foot of that unit is and how many bedrooms are there?
So on the third floor, see, I'm not, I'm trying to, I really apologize, but I'm trying to see, my architect has all these informations, so I'm not sure if he's on the Zoom, because I can't see if he's on or not. So in his three bedroom?
So there's three bedrooms?
And one?
Yeah, and what's the square footage proposed about? Is it a little smaller, it looks like, than the second floor?
Yes, it's about, I would say it's about 950 square feet, the whole entire unit.
Okay, and it has a separate means of egress?
Yes.
And how does that happen?
So I guess on the thing he had proposed that we put a sprinkler system on all the, on all the...
But how does the, how does the potential owner or resident of this unit get up there? Do they have a separate door?
Yes, they have a separate, they have, they have a separate door.
Okay, so it's not going through somebody's unit?
No, it's not.
Robinson, could you please help us out and?
Sure.
Have you spent the floor to ceiling height in this?
No, I don't have a section of it. I guess I do have a question. The proponent indicated, I mean, there's existing dormers on the house, but they're low dormers. They sort of sit on the eaves. So in the plans we have, it shows the dormers and the bedrooms to the rear, which I don't understand how he would get enough head height in those bedrooms to be legal, but I don't have a configuration of what they laid out, so I don't really have a way to assess this, you know? It's a little bit unclear, because this shows two bedrooms and it does show the extended dormers in the back, I think, but it doesn't really show the existing dormers. So a little bit of, not clear in the drawings, to be honest, what is going on. There is an access point, so, I mean, we could, I would be probably okay with if we approve with no building code relief or something of that nature, just to restrict it so there's no issues with head height and other access points, if that's what we want to proceed with.
Okay, is anybody here to speak, either in support or in opposition?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board. Eric Jane to the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant for 71 Willowood had an Abutter's meeting on May 18th. As I understand, it was a pretty straightforward meeting. They also met with the Woodrow Ave Neighborhood Association, where I believe they gained support. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of the board on this matter. Thank you.
I have no additional reasons.
And BPDA?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Jeff Hampton, BPDA. We recommended approval with design review, but like Mr. Robinson said, that was based on the plans that we saw with the dormers, with the extended living space in the attic. So we do have a recommendation of approval with design review. I would echo the sentiment that if the board were to see this, to be approved, that there'd be no building code relief if the dormers are not part of this project anymore. Thank you.
Can I just ask the proponent a real quick question? So I understand you're already built and it's a roughed in. So there is no exterior changes on the current bill, right, from what is existing?
No, we didn't, we ended up not doing the exterior changes at all.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with no building code relief.
I'll second that.
Fortune.
Aye.
Ehrlich.
Aye.
Dong.
Aye.
Regiro.
No.
Not in support of what you propose? Robinson?
Aye.
Binado?
Aye.
Arajo in opposition because I think that this is, should not have gone ahead. But motion carries, so it's been approved with no building code relief. And since it's now just waiting for inspection, can I ask staff, please, to make sure that everything is conveyed to the building inspector?
We can do that, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Calling a next case, calling DOA 128-9438-211, West Third Street. Mister adding story atop the existing building, creating a fourth residential unit at deck to the back of the drawing. Violation Article 68, Section 8, the building is excessive in feet. Article 68, Section 8, usable open space is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the side yard is sufficient. And Article 68, Section 8, the additional lot area is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams and Maranti with the business address of 168 Eighth Street, South Boston. I'm here on behalf of the applicant who's joining us today, Jason Morrison, and the architect Doug Stefanoff will be joining us as well. As just stated from Mr. Secretary, this is a proposal to change the occupancy from a three-family dwelling to a four-family dwelling by adding an additional story. This is currently owner-occupied and will continue to be so. Rear decks will also be constructed for egress added to each unit. Currently, the three bed, it's, it's, three units are two bedrooms apiece, ranging from 1,131 square feet. That fourth unit will actually be a copy of the first three units as well. This proposal is located within a multifamily residential sub-district. We have violations for building height. As you can see from the existing condition, that there is an existing headhouse that brings the building height to approximately 40 feet.
Hold on, hold on, Counselor. Can you tell us which drawing we should be looking at?
Doug Stefanoff, if you could just interject as far as the actual page.
Oh, sure. I would go further into this.
Right, right there. That would be perfect, right here, for the height, if we could scroll up. So this here shows that the existing headhouse in the chimney on the top that brings us to approximately about 40 feet in height, that will be eliminated from the new proposal when adding the fourth story, which will bring us to 41 feet and 11 inches to the roofline. But because we have to continue to run that chimney up on the existing, on the new proposed building, that will add an additional four feet and, four feet and six and a half inches, which will bring the total proposal to height of 46.5 feet. Is, we have a violation for the side yard. As you can see, is that we're not changing the existing footprint of the building, so those are all nonperforming.
So Counselor, hold on a minute. Can you tell us how, if this is contextual? Is there, are there additional four families within this block?
Yes, there are, there are multifamilies in this lot. And as you can see is from the roofline here is intact and aesthetically affit with other rooflines in this neighborhood as well.
Yes, can you tell us which drawing we should be referring to?
Is, so this is the new drawing here that will show the new existing height. This here, so you'll see that where, to the roofline there, it's at 41 feet and 11 inches. And then the chimney that which has to be extended in the property will raise it another four feet and six and a half inches. And that's what brings it to the proposed height of 46.5 feet. Aesthetically, that roofline is in line with other neighboring abutting dwellings on this, on this block itself.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are fine, and I do agree. There is a series of four-story buildings on this street. It seems fairly consistent with the urban blocks, so no questions.
Okay, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Anna White with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS held an abutters meeting for 211 West Third Street on June 9th of this year. We have no letters in support or opposition to this project. At this time, we'd like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We do have some letters of support.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Paul Colvin, Assistant Counsel, Lodge Michael Flaherty. While his stance towards Article 68 has remained consistent, there are projects that do warrant merit, and he would defer to the board on this matter. Thank you.
Anna, I'm going to get that one here.
Good morning, morning of the chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President Flynn's office. The Counselor would like to go on recording support based on a truth community process, support from abutters, and no outstanding issues reported to our office. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. And I have no additional raised hands. I'll make you a panelist, Anna, as well. Thank you.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve BPDA design review.
Second.
Fortune.
Aye.
Ehrlich.
Aye.
Dong.
Aye.
Regiro.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Binado.
Aye.
Arajo, also aye. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Calling a next case, calling DOA 129-6986, 25 Everest Street. This is to combine two lots into one, 2,707 square feet, 1,925 square feet, resulting in 4,632 square feet. Raise the existing single-family home and garage on lot and erect a four-story, six-unit residential dwelling with six off-street parking. Violation Article 27G, this is in the East Boston iPod. Article 32, Section 32-4, groundwater, this is in G-Cod, groundwater conservation overlay district. Article 53, Section 8, the use is forbidden. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking. Article 53, Section 57.2, form an existing building alignment. Article 53, Section 9, the additional area is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, building height is excessive in stories. Article 53, Section 9, the building is excessive in feet. Article 53, Section 9, the usable open space is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, front yard is sufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lenz, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. With me is also Will Shalafah from Calso Design. Madam Chair, procedural history on this. And while we're back before the board in August of 2019, this board actually approved this project for six units at four stories with eight parking spaces. We had, that was subject to BPDA designer view and comments from BTD relative to the number of parking spaces in the rear. When we had gone through the BPDA designer view process, BPDA had recommended a reduction in parking from the eight spaces that were approved down to six. As a result of that, when we conferred with ISD relative to the process for that, we had requested board final arbiter to make that modification. ISD indicated this needed a new hearing based upon the reduction of parking spaces. In addition, because now we would also be subject to G-Cod, we're back before the board for essentially the same project, with the reduction from eight spaces to six spaces. I can run through briefly just the changes, so we actually just all on the effort.
Can we hold on for a minute? Is Christian on?
Yes, Madam Chair, good morning. Christian Semenali, Boston Grower Trust, and we have both letters from the applicant.
Here we have the letters as well.
Okay, okay, so can you tell us what has changed, then?
Sure. So with, so I'll run through each of the items, but just...
And sorry, please, please remind me when this was approved?
August of 2019, and there was an extension of, of time from the last approval.
Okay, so go ahead.
So the proposed use is a multifamily six-unit. That was what was originally approved. There's been no change. Neither, no change about lot size, lot width, or building height from what was previously approved. Our rear setback does get modified about two feet based upon the building design change. However, I will point out, behind the property is a private ways. Though our abutting rear property is actually further beyond the private ways, so there's minimal impact to that. We don't change anything with respect to the setback in the rear. We do change the side yard from an original approved five feet to 2.5 feet. However, that is a compliant condition based upon the 3F-2000 district. We reduce our FER by...
Sorry, sorry, Counselor. So the side yard concerns me because I just wonder, what is the distance to the, to the abutting buildings and how basic maintenance will be maintained on that building? Such as, no, no side yard, is on...
Sure, actually, we, if we go to the site plans, a few, a few slides further down, and actually, advanced, yeah, correct. Keep going. Further, we have a landscape plan as well. One more, two more. One more. There we go. So as you can see here, and this again is based upon the process thus far with the BPDA regarding the redesign of the building footprint. As you can see, we do have two and a half foot side yard for most of the building on the narrower portion of the lot. The rear portion of the lot, obviously, has a much greater side yard based upon the expanded footprint, that is, that lots of the rear that's being combined. So we are proposing that change in condition as well.
But you were, you were approved, however, for a five-foot side yard?
That's correct, and I will point out, 3F-2000 district, however, a 2.5-foot side yard is compliant.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. No questions on the plans. I guess I just had a question. Did I see the BPDA's recommendation on this? I just trying to remember. I thought there was...
Yes, there is, yeah, yes, exactly.
And I, just for the record, Mr. Robinson, if I may, you know, so the genesis of why we're back here, ironically, is because of BPDA designer view.
No, I understand that. I understand that, Counselor. I appreciate that.
Hold on, everybody. Hold on. We will have the BPDA speak for themselves.
Yeah.
So let's just, any questions from the board? Mr. Hampton?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jeff Hampton, BPDA. I think this might be one of the rare cases where I think there was something lost in translation. I mean, Mr. Lenz is correct. We recommended, in our past recommendation, when it was an eight unit, we recommended six.
Yeah.
And we stayed consistent with the denial. We stayed consistent here. Mr. Lenz is right. I cannot switch our recommendation to approval because it was approved by our board. However, I just think it was something that was lost in translation on this, and...
All right.
That's really all I can say.
Okay, anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Natalia Benitez with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. An abutters meeting was held on April 2018. Based on my understanding, there were initial concerns from the director of butter, who over time has shifted to support the project. This is a unique case, Madam Chair, because there has been a lot of turnover with liaison's inner office as a civic association membership. So the information I have is very limited. So at this time, I would like to defer all judgment to the board. Thank you. I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with continuing BPDA designer view.
I'll second Eric.
Fortune.
Aye.
Ehrlich.
Aye.
Dong.
Aye.
Regiro.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Binado.
Aye.
Arajo is also aye, so motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling a next case, calling DOA 130-7734, 122 Saratoga Street. To confirm our agreement as a one-family and change to a four-unit residential dwelling. Scope includes erecting a rear addition with new rear decks and roof deck. The violation is Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 53, Section 8, the use is forbidden. Article 27T-5, this is in the East Boston iPod. Article 53, Section 52, roof structure restriction. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 53, Section 9, side yards insufficient. And Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lenz, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of petitioner Francesco Spoldi. With me also is Chris Drew from 686 Architects, who's a project architect. Madam Chair, brief overview. This project, the site is located in the lower Eagle Hill Maverick, between Maverick Central and Eagle Hill, section of East Boston. It is a 2F-2000 district. The building we are proposing renovate is a semi-attached, single-family dwelling with six bedrooms. Our proposal would change the occupancy and complete a, do a complete renovation on the existing right side of this building that we're looking at and change the occupancy to four units with an addition of the rear. One of the things I will point out is that we've worked very closely with the abutting property to the left. As you can see, the existing building itself sort of has its own style to both sides. It doesn't seem like there was any economy of scale and siding the building, et cetera. So we've worked closely, and I do have a rendering showing what the finished product would look like because the plan here would be to make this building look much more uniform than it currently does. Respect to the units, we are proposing two one-bedroom units and two two-bedroom units. The average unit size is about 957 square feet. The one-bedrooms range from 722 square feet to about 10 square feet. The two-bedrooms are a little over 1,100 square feet, so very generously sized. Respect to the relief that we require, this is, would be considered...
So, hold on, please tell us how, where is the addition?
If you can jump back to the site plan, it might be about two slides back. So we see here the existing building here with our proposed addition and our proposed patio with a roof deck. I will point out, the roof deck is actually below the highest part of the roof line. This is being proposed on the rear portion of the building. The building itself has a pitched roof to the front. So the roof deck is pretty well-hidden, access from stairwell, not from the headhouse.
So if I understand this right, then one half of the building will be elongated and pretty much consume all the rear yard, if that what it looks like?
Well, we do, we do actually step the building back, Madam Chair, so the lower level is the furthest-most portion. We do have some elevations that we can show the board. I think we go to the next slide, it will be a side elevation. So we see here, the lower level is the furthest point back, and the building does step back to the second and third level as well. And you can see the orientation of the proposed roof deck. We do have about a 20-foot setback, and we do have an overview plan. This is very consistent with the adjoining building to the left that we talked about earlier in the presentation. So our, our building itself would be consistent depth with the adjoining building to our left.
So the adjoining, oh, sorry, so the adjoining building to the left matches this in, in rear, in rear yard extension?
Yeah, we do have an overview. You can see the overview, satellite view of the building itself, and you can see the extent of that addition.
Can you tell us, refers to the correct page we should be looking at?
I'm sorry, you can, the BPD abstract would work. You can scroll down, you can see the relative distance of the building. That's to our left, and that proposed, I proposed addition as well.
Oh, I see. The difference is that you're going, how far will you be from the side property line there?
So our setbacks on the side currently is zero on the left side and about four and a half feet on the right. Those are the existing conditions. If we can jump to the site plan, jump forward maybe two slides, two or three slides. Yeah, so we, we maintain that zero setback on the left and our four and a half foot setback on the right.
Okay, okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are fine. I guess my only real question on the proposal is that, the shared property line, because there is windows in the addition of the abutting property. So I don't quite understand how that's going to work, to be honest.
So I believe, Mr. Robinson, I believe where the windows are on the building to the left, I do believe they have the sufficient setback of three feet that allows for that opening to be maintained. I don't believe where...
Correct. Sorry, Chris Drew, 686 Architects. Yes, on that abutting building, on the, it's the 120 Saratoga, that from our zero property line is setback about three and a half feet on the, on their existing extension.
Right, but, I mean, in all honesty, you're not being very neighborly, smacking right against your property line. It's still going to be open now, and it will be down to two and a half feet for one, two, three, four, five windows on their parcel. That, you agree with that?
Yeah, it, it will be about three, three and a half feet basically from, you know, the edge of our proposed addition to the edge of their... to the edge of their extension itself.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Well, just to continue on that, so currently those windows from the abutting building look out, what, on open space? And now they'll look out on the wall?
That is correct.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Natalia Venites with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We hosted an abutters' meeting for this project on April 11th. No issues were raised at the meeting. The abutters did say that they believe this was a good addition to the street. The applicant also met with two associations, the Eagle Hill Civic Association, which they opposed. The members are against getting rid of the single-family homes, and they would like the design to look more historic, and also mention the lack of open space. Maverick Central Neighborhood Association approved, they believe it is a good addition to the neighborhood. At this time, we're all for a defer judgment to the board, thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we do have seven, whether it's
We do have three of opposition.
Okay, I'm gonna try, I have two raised hands here, I'll start with Maria. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, yes, my name, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Maria Catino, I live at 111 Princeton Street. My parents also live here, Antonio and Raquel Catino, they could not attend this morning. They own the house because they're away. We oppose the addition because of looking, understanding that it's going from a one-family to a four-unit. Our concern is that we have a balcony that looks over and has the view of the skyline. Our concern is that if you're putting a roof deck and then going back out into the yard and extending and building up, our concern is that you will be obstructing, or obstructing our view to the Boston skyline, which we've enjoyed for over three decades. So, we would like to oppose that or understand how high that build, the roof deck with the units are gonna go, high up. And in comparison to me and some of the neighbors, of that view, will that be obstructed now?
Did you have, I'm sorry, did you have an opportunity to participate in any of the community meetings?
I did not, no. I was not aware of any meetings or when they were discussing this. I just received the notice a few weeks ago, and then that's when I submitted an email opposing. So, I don't know if they just fit to the immediate
Thank you. Thank you. Can we hear from anybody else?
Diane, go ahead, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
I don't think this is the one I want to comment on, I want to comment on the Cross Street project.
Oh, all right. So, I'll lower your hand, and manager, Evan? Tim Poe?
Hi.
Can you state your name and address for the record?
Hi. Hi, I live in 396 Beet Street, Boston, Massachusetts. I think that having more people live there seems a lot more important than
Sorry, which, sorry, which neighborhood are you in?
I'm in Rosendale.
Okay, this is, this is an East Boston project. As I mentioned before, we want to hear from abutters, who will be directly impacted. So, can we just go ahead and, is there anybody else?
Francesco, are you looking at test number?
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Francesco's the project proponent, he's the project proponent.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Okay, may I hear, please, from the BPDA?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Jeff Hampton, BPDA. We recommend it denial without prejudice, we think the extension is a little excessive. It really takes away a lot of the open space in the rear yard.
Okay, so given all of that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Is there a second?
Second.
Fortune?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Righiro?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Donato?
Aye.
Arajo is also aye, so it's been denied without prejudice.
Calling an X case, calling BOA 130-9465, 3964 Washington Street. This is to convert an existing basement into a new unit, change art from three units to four units. Violation Article 67, Section 8, a multi-family use is forbidden. Article 67, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 67, Section 9.4, the location of the main entrance. Article 67, Section 8.2, basement units. Article 67, Section 9, the lot area is insufficient. Article 67, Section 9, lot width is insufficient. Article 67, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article 67, Section 9, lot frontage is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, is there, can I just, I don't know if I can step in now or not. There's not really any information on the height and clearance in the basement unit. If that's what the proponent is, I think we need to probably request some more additional information.
Thank you, Mr. De Silva, are you on?
Would you ask your hand, is it raised, is it the point here?
So, I'm in contact with them, okay.
I just see him right here, a second. Caesar? Send a request to unmute you.
Oh, hello, can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, Mrs. Silva, go ahead, put your name and address on the record.
Yes, my name is Caesar De Silva, I represent the owner. Actually, we would like to ask for the referral on this, actually.
Hold on, hold on, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Fortune?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Righiro?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Donato?
Aye.
Arajo, also, motion carries, the date, please?
You'll have a date of October 4th at 11:30.
And please, Mr. De Silva, Mr. Robinson, can you clarify what additional information we need?
Yes, I think if you can give some information on the existing grades as they relate to the basement height, as well as the clearances in the basement. And I think you probably will understand, the board isn't so excited about just window egress wells. That just doesn't seem to really work for us. And I think the grade is very tight, as I see it in the sort of site, Google Street views and things. So, if you can take that into consideration next time.
I will, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And what's the date again?
October 4th at 11:30.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Calling the next case, calling BOA 132-0835, 9 Ewen Street. Disrupt a new four-story, four-unit residential building, propose full off-street parking. The violation is Article 10, Section 1, limitation of parking area, side yard buffer. Article 60, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 60, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Article 60, Section 40, off-street parking, design maneuverability. Article 60, Section 9, the additional lot areas are sufficient. Article 60, Section 9, the dimensional regulation of habitable stories has been exceeded, three stories is the max. Article 60, Section 9, insufficient front yard setback. And Article 60, Section 8, four-family is forbidden. Name and address for the record.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Secretary, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Attorney Gilson Feaster from the law firm of Dane Torpey, 175 Federal Street, Suite 1500, Boston 02106. Thank you very much, this matter has come before the board previously. At that time, with all of the continued support of the abutters and the neighborhood association, which I will mention in a moment, the board at that time denied this because it had bedrooms in the basement unit. That has changed, and this, the proposal in front of you from the applicant. The applicant continues to have the support of the abutters and the area eligible
So, Mr. Feaster, please tell us what is being proposed, how, and how it's going to be accomplished?
And talk about the violations, please. All right, well, I certainly have a person who's more efficient than I in that, Madam Chair, so I'm gonna have the architect, David Freed, do that for you. So, Mr. Freed?
Yes, thank you, my name is David Freed, and I'm an architect at Chuen Company. The proposed project is a four-unit building. The units are designed as duplexes with two bedrooms, two and a half baths, and a study. The lower units have the living area in the basement level, and the living spaces exceed the code minimum for light and air. And then the bedrooms are on the first floor level for the lower units. The upper units are designed with the living areas on the second floor and the bedrooms on the third floor. The units range in size from 1370 to 1451 square feet. There is open space in the rear yard, the side yard to the right, and in the front yard. The, to the left of the building, there's parking for four cars.
Mr. Freed, can you please talk to us about the, the, what was, the, the, the first, the two units on the ground floor? Talk to us about how far below grade they are, and just talk us through that, please, regarding
Yes, if you could please kindly move forward to, I believe it's sheet 821? 823, yes. That's great, so the cell height in the living areas is set at three foot five, and the windows are four feet tall, so the window head is basically at seven foot six. And, so that's the relationship of the lower unit to grade.
Okay, and so then, talk to us about the parking?
Yeah, the, if you would kindly go to sheet A0? So, there's, there's parking for three vehicles abutting in the rear lot line, and there's a fourth vehicle that has its own parking space, setback 20 feet from the others, so that the parking space number one has maneuverability. The fourth parking space is not in the front yard, it's in the side yard, in the layout.
And so, if we look at that, the occupancy in the, I'm gonna just call it in the basement, where does the, where do those windows open to? Does it open to this parking lot?
Yeah, the windows in unit A do open on the side of the parking, and there are also, there are also windows in the front as well for both unit A and B.
Okay. Okay, yeah, we're not thrilled about occupancy in the basement, so, you know, just keep that in mind. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, you know, I think the switch of the floor plates, I guess, meets the sort of spirit of what we were trying to avoid. But, you know, there is some grade change from right to left, so I think the left-hand lower unit is probably in better, often the right. But, and I think my only other kind of question is, obviously, there's a lot of paving for the parking lot because of maneuverability issues. So, maybe we should, it's true, we should have a reviser to look specifically at this parking configuration and the paving on the site. So, no other questions on the proposal, for me.
Madam Chair, I think Mr. D'Amico spoke on that, so I don't know if it helps, Mr. Robinson.
Okay, go ahead.
Madam Chair, ladies, members of the board, Bob D'Amico, Boston Fairлетation Department. In order to create some screening and buffering and improve maneuverability, I'd like to recommend that space number one be removed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a question. It's one thing when you have renovations in the existing building and you're going into the basement. I'm a little puzzled about why, with new construction, why it was designed in such a way that there's this below-grade living space? I mean, there's really no need for that, and is there some logic that I'm missing? This is a question for the applicant.
I guess I can answer that. The owner of the property wanted to design four duplex units. He wanted to be able to provide units that would be for either a young family or young professionals, starting a family, and wanted to be able to provide sufficient space in each unit for
No, 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 that I understand, but why not move the whole building up?
Suppose it would be, then, they would incur a second, another violation?
A height violation?
A height, a height violation, the 35 feet and two and a half stories, you know, would be, it would be the 35 feet that would trigger it.
So, is it at 35 feet right now?
Yes, 349, yeah.
Oh, okay, that's too bad.
Yeah, can I also, Madam Chair, Attorney Feaster, can I just add to that explanation? I, during the neighborhood process, a lot of this, Mr. Ehrlich, would bet it in exactly what Chair Arajo said. The concern was to keep consistency in terms of the height and not to desire to have the height. So, that was the basis upon which, notwithstanding the applicant's desire to provide the spacing for the units, to provide that space was to be able to maintain the height consistency in the neighborhood.
Out of curiosity, did the applicant, this is a 3F 5000 district, did the applicant actually check out what the options would be to have one unit on the ground floor, an honest-to-goodness, you know, unit, and then the, you know, the split units on the other two floors? So that in fact, we were working in the, completely in the spirit of excluding basement occupancy, but also respecting the height, et cetera, of the neighborhood?
I would say, Madam Chair, I believe not, that did not come up in any of the conversations. I, my sense was, I thought that the board was concerned about having bedroom space in the basement as opposed to having usable space in the basement. I'm trying to understand how this differs from many other developments where they may have family rooms or playrooms in that, in that space. And so, that's, we reverse the bedroom space to accommodate those concerns which the board expressed back in 2020. So, I'm not clear about the inquiry at this particular point in time. But to answer your question directly, I would say that the applicant did not consider the option you just proposed, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
If I could, Mr. Feaster, I think the issue is when we look at family rooms, we're typically looking at existing buildings where it's already below grade. And this is a different situation where you have the possibility of designing fresh because it's a new building. So, I think that's what makes it different.
And Mr. Ehrlich, I, you know, that is very, very illustrative. I would just say, in my attempt to give appropriate guidance to my client, I was unaware of both the board's admonition with regards to that, and which I also learned at the last hearing, was the one for bedrooms in the basement, and we tried to address that. I think that your point is definitely well-taken. This was clearly a design feature which was supported by their abutters and by the neighborhood association. So, I would ask the board to give some credence to that, and if there is a particular design concern here, well, then I guess the board will act as it determines it should. But I think that this has gone through an exhaustive process on two occasions, and this is
Thank you.
That we have presented.
Thank you, counsel. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Denise De Santos from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The beginning process of this proposal was conducted by a liaison, a previous liaison prior to me, but they did have support from director abutters and as well as the association. And they went through a few different abutters' meetings with the community as well. And they went through a few different butters meetings with the community as well. Thank you.
Madam Chair, the secretary here, we do have three letters of opposition.
Chair, I have a raised hand. Caller 781636, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I did that by accident. I have no comment.
And I have no additional raised hands.
Okay, given that information, may I have a motion, please? I mean, I could see a possibility of approval for three dwelling units. This is a 3F5,000. Okay, may I have a motion?
I, I, I mean.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve with no living space in the lower level.
And, and design review?
And design review.
Okay. Is there a second? Is there a second? Okay.
I mean, I.
Mr. Figaro, you sound like you're on the verge of saying something.
Yeah, I just, I, I, I hear the verb, bullets, concerns, but at, at the same token, we, did we ask them all bedrooms in the basement? They put bedrooms in the basement. We've approved projects like this before, though.
Yes, but, but the difference is, this is new construction. And, and, and usually what we do is, we usually see retrofits. And that's, that's what the difference is. Okay, so given that.
Mr. Rogeri, I, I, I understand, Mr. Rogeri, too, and I, you know, I'd like to, to do that. I think my issue on the lower level one is the one to the right, as you faced, is all the way under. It's not, the one to the left does take advantage of some of the site context toward the driveway side, and those windows are a little bit better. But the one on the right is, is basically underground. So I just, I'm not sure how to, like, it's a little bit of a split decision. I'm trying to move it along.
Yep, I'll second, Mr. Robinson.
But, but the question becomes then, is this, you know, given the fact that the, the unit on the right is entirely submerged, should it be a three-family? Is my question to you, with some expansion space in the basement as far as a playroom or whatever, whatever, so that in fact, that is a, a, a more complete unit, and then, you know, the other two continuing to be the split levels?
I, I mean, I, I did a quick takeoff. I, I don't have a problem with the four-family. They could be one-bedroom units on the, the main floor and still provide four units.
Yeah.
So, but that's not up to me, that's the pro bono. So I wasn't going to address the number of units.
Okay, so your, your, and your motion is for approval with design review with no basement occupancy? And also, did we want to address the asphalt? Or did we want to look for a permeable surface?
Yeah, I, I think the design review specifically to the site planning, and also Mr. D'Amico's comment on the parking maneuverability. So I think it can just have a, a site plan or a sort of review with, with the architect.
Okay. So there's a motion, there's a second. Did you second that, Mr. Rogero?
Yes, I did.
Okay, Fortune?
Aye.
Ehrlich?
Opposed.
Dong?
Aye.
Rogero?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Panado?
Aye.
Aragio's also aye. Motion carries with all those provisos.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, board. It's now 10:42. I'm going to call the 10:30 hearings for any deferrals or withdrawals. So this will be 10:30 only for deferrals or withdrawals. Give the add-on first, please.
Madam Chair, can I just make a quick comment? If anyone's in the attendee section and they need to be elevated to a panelist because they're presenting their own project, can you please raise your hand to make sure you're in the right place? And you also have to accept the panelist designation once it pops up.
I'm going to call the next case for 9:30. Calling DOA 1327827, 130 Bremen Street. This is a change of occupancy from a three-family to a four-family to renovate the existing structure by adding a new fourth story. Also construct new rear decks and egress stairs. Violation Article 25, Section 5, floodplain regulations, Article 27T-5. This is in the East Boston I Fund. Article 53, Section 8, a multifamily dwelling is forbidden. Article 53, Section 9, the lot area for additional dwelling units is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 53, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Article 53, Section 52, roof structure restriction. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 9, Section 1, extension of a non-performing building. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago &amp; Toscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. Here on behalf of the applicant, Michael Scuttiens, and we also have the architect, Adam Glassman from GCT Architects. As was mentioned, we are proposing to change the occupancy from an existing three-unit building. This will include a complete gut renovation to also add a recessed fourth-story addition on the top of the building. This will also include rear decks for each unit and rear egress enclosed stairs in the back of the property. Just to go over the layout of the building, the building is completely unoccupied, it's uninhabitable right now. In the basement, there was, upon my client purchasing, an illegal basement apartment or dwelling unit. That will be completely removed, and that basement will now be used for just storage and utility room. The first floor of the building is a proposed two-bed, two-bath with an office at 890 square feet that has a rear deck and egress stairs for a second means of egress that we would include.
I'm sorry, Counselor, are we looking at the right plans? Because the basement plan does show.
It does the existing, Madam Chair.
Oh, it's the existing plan, okay. Where is the proposed plan?
If we go to the next, A1-1. A1-1, sorry. So.
Okay.
Yep, so that shows the storage in the basement, Madam Chair. As we go up to the second floor, this would be a two-bed, two-bath at 890 square feet with a rear deck and egress stairs. The third floor is a two-bed, two-bath at 890 square feet, also with rear deck and egress stairs. And the new added floor on top is a proposed two-bedroom, two-bath, 870 square feet, that has rear egress stairs and a rear deck. It does have a five-foot, three-inch pull-in from the front of the building. There is no deck out there, that would just be dead space for the building.
Okay, so, hold on. So you're within the floodplain? So is there any occupancy in the, in, with the base flood elevation?
There is none, we're not touching.
There is not, okay.
Great, great.
Good to know.
We'll start.
Okay, and what is, what triggers roof structure restrictions?
It's the addition of the fourth floor, Madam Chair.
How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plan, plans are good. I think that, you know, that this is, I'll say, I guess, we're maybe setting a precedent. I mean, the entire block is a three-story block. This is a fourth. I do appreciate the removal of the basement unit, even though it's illegal, I guess. But I guess the little bit of the question is, are we accepting the, basically moving that unit up to the fourth floor? Floodplain issues, I get. So I think there's some interesting questions in this, but I, I have really no questions about the actual proposal.
If I may address your comment, Mr. Robinson.
Yeah.
It does fall within one of the main thoroughfares identified in Plan East Boston for additional height density. Across the street, there is an approved, right across from us, a 69-foot, six, six-story building that went through BPDA and another one proposed. So we would be lower than the building, the buildings across the street.
Yeah, I, I understand, thank you, I appreciate that as well.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak, either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Natalia Benitez with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. An butter meeting was held on April 11th for this project. Only one butter attended the meeting, and no concerns were raised. The applicant also met with the Maverick Central Neighborhood Association in June. The group voted to support the project. They liked the layout of the units as well as the facade of the building. Our office has received four letters of support as well, and at this time, our office would like to defer all judgment to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have those letters. Madam Chair, we have those, both of them.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands, thank you.
So we need to just keep in mind that this is, now, this, this is within the floodplain, even though there is no construction proposed in this, in this area. And for this particular proposal, I do think we need to put it on the record that we are not supporting any occupancy within the floodplain. So can I have a motion, please?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review and no occupancy in the floodplain.
Deny, deny the request for relief from Article 25, Section 5.
Deny the relief from Article 25, Section 5.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Fortune?
Aye.
Ehrlich?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Rogero?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Panado?
Aye.
Aragio's also aye. So motion carries with those provisos, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling DOA 1344548, 605 Tremont Street. This is a change of occupancy from a six-family and retail business to a six-family and restaurant, 36A. Violation 6, Article 64, Section 8. Restaurant and takeout restaurant are both conditional uses. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Nancy Lowe. I'm one of the owners of the building. Joining me is Kyle Lau, the mechanical engineer, and Carrie Ko, one of the business owners. They are proposing to have a small sushi restaurant at the ground floor level of this building. There will be 12 seats. And we, because of the conditional use, that is why we're here for the board, there'll be minimal construction and just, you know, minor, minor.
So just, a quick, a couple of quick questions. What is the official name of the restaurant?
It is 311.
311 is the name of the restaurant?
Yes.
Okay, and you're providing 12 seats. Is the, does the applicant have, or does the proposed owner or operator have experience with takeout in the city of Boston?
Yes, they have operated restaurants in Chinatown, and they have served sushi, and that also provides takeout.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr.? And what's, this is an MFLSR, so it's a conditional use. Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
Plans are good, no question. And just so, for the board, the accessibility was relieved by the state as well. One question, is there, doesn't appear any, there is cooking here or no cooking?
There is, well, sushi is, is very minimal cooking, the rice and soup.
Sure.
And, and the fish will be raw.
Okay.
So there's very small, little.
I just know there, there was some concern on some of the butters about smell, and I just wanted to confirm. It seemed like, I did not see any major cooking in here, I just wanted to.
I'm assuming the refrigeration will be excellent. So any questions from the board?
I was curious, what is the retail business that's there now?
There is no retail business. Since we reopened the building, we've had difficulties renting out the space, and then with the pandemic, so there is no retail business there now.
So it's vacant?
Vacant.
Okay.
Is anybody here to speak, either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Calling a new man with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer judgment to the board. Our office held in the butters meeting in June. We're unaware of any concerns to the community. Don't believe this will be a significant impact on the neighborhood. That would be for the board, thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we have, what is of support, one opposition?
Good morning, one of the chair members of the board, Anna Calero from Council President Fling's office. The Counselor would like to go recording support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Fortune, what was the opposition based on?
Opposed to the sushi restaurant.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Motion approved, but the usual takeout provisos isn't for this applicant only.
Okay. Fortune?
Aye.
Ehrlich?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Rogero?
Aye.
Robinson? Panado?
Aye.
Aragio's aye, Robinson?
Sorry, Robinson is aye, sorry.
Motion carries, you're all set with those provisos. Good luck.
Madam Chair, um, can I ask the applicant to, I'm assuming the applicant is not Ms. Lowe, the owner of the restaurant?
Yes, it's, it's 311, the restaurant name.
Okay, 311.
Yeah.
Is that an 311 LLC, or what's the corporate name of the restaurant?
Ms. Lowe, you can send that information to ISD, okay? In the meantime, let's move.
Thank you, thank you.
Calling the next case, calling DOA 1349025, 1153 to 1155 Washington Street. This is a wrecking, new five-story mixed-use building with 24 residential units, over 18 parking spaces, with accessory amenity space and roof deck, small retail space. Violation Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 53, Section 56, off-street loading is insufficient. Article 56, Section 16, excessive FAR. Article 56, Section 16, the building height has been exceeded. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm recusing myself from this case, Eric.
Okay. So, sorry, this is a, a note to the applicant. This is a six-member board, and for approval, you need five members in support. You have the option to proceed or to defer to a later date when there is a seven-member board.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Baranci. I'm an attorney with the business address 350 West Broadway in South Austin. This time, we opt to proceed with the six-member board.
Okay, go ahead.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, members, I represent Joey Arcari, the purchaser and developer of this property located at 1153 Washington Street in Dorchester's historic Lower Mill neighborhood at the confluence of Washington Street and Adams Street. The site consists of a 12,101-square-foot lot, which is currently occupied by a single-story commercial building, which is a convenience store and liquor store with a large service accessory parking lot. What is proposed is a new four-story mixed-use building to contain 24 dwelling units, including four IDP units for an IDP percentage of 17%.
I'm sorry, did you say, I'm sorry, did you say it was a four or five story?
It's a four-story building. The zoning refusal letter does recite five-story. It's a four-story with a recessed amenity room on the roof that, that doesn't reach, actually, the, the size of being a full story.
Okay.
Additionally, there would be approximately 1,655 square feet of ground-floor commercial space with 18 accessory residential parking spaces located in the ground floor, garage access from Washington Street, and a total of 29 resident and visitor bicycle spaces. And as I said, there would be a rooftop common amenity room with a large common roof deck with elevator access. This is an Article 80 small project, which was approved by the BPDA on July 14. Madam Chair, the unit mix consists of four one-bedroom units of approximately 660 square feet and 22-bedroom units ranging in size from 852 square feet to 1,221 square feet. The governing zoning is Article 65, and the site is located within an NS Neighborhood Shopping Zoning Sub-District, and the proposed project requires four variances. The zoning refusal letter cites violation for insufficient off-street parking. 18 spaces are to be provided, while table L would require 35 spaces for the residential use and the commercial use. The provided parking ratio was determined by the BPDA and City Transportation Staff during the Article 80 review process. Insufficient off-street loading is also a cited violation. Building's garage and its contained uses also underwent a great deal of review by the BPDA and City Transportation Staff, while not an identified loading dock, there is an unprogrammed garage area adjacent to the elevator which can accommodate periodic move-in, move-out and commercial loading activity. A variance is needed for excessive floor area ratio with proposed FAR at 2.4 and a maximum underzoning of 1, and the building requires a height variance with the. And the building requires a height variance with a maximum of 40 feet underzoning and a proposed height of 46 feet to the roof of the building and 57 feet to the top of the smaller rooftop amenity room, which is well set back from all public ways. Building's height and massing are derived from a careful study of the site's context and urban conditions. Architecturally, the building's expression is regarded almost as an extension of the historical Baker Chocolate Mill buildings from which the proposed project takes significant design and massing use. Madam Chair, Michael Delapay from Brody Architects is here, and both he and I are available to answer any questions that the board may have.
Yes, so tell us again what the ID, how many IDP units?
There would be four IDP units. Unit 204, a 968 square foot two-bedroom. Unit 208, a 661 square foot one-bedroom. Unit 305, a 1,070 square foot two-bedroom. And unit 307, a 1,024 square foot two-bedroom unit.
So that's three two-bedrooms and one one-bed.
Correct.
And let me see, how are the plans, Mr. Olick?
The plans are nice. Just a couple of questions. You know, with respect to the height, excessive height, the immediate, it is, it is considerably higher than the immediate abutting buildings. But you know, if you take the whole neighborhood as a whole with the chocolate factory, I suppose it does fit in, but that's an issue. My question for the architect has to do with the amenity space. It's not clear how that works and what that is and how high it is, et cetera.
I'm sorry, Mr. Olick, this is the rooftop amenity space?
Yes. Yeah, so if the architect is.
This is, this is Mike Delapay from Brody Architects, business address 535 Albany Street in the south end. Madam Ambassador, can you go to page nine, please? Thank you. So you can see in the lower left-hand corner, right-hand corner, there's a small amenity space of about 900 square feet. This is, this is basically to provide a conditioned area for the elevator to exit out of, for the common roof deck, which has two.
Can I, can I just, can I just hold on, can everybody just hold on for a moment? I understand that the citations on this are all inaccurate. Article 53 is East Boston. Article 56 is West Roxbury. Mr. Maranci? So we have, we just have a problem here. This, I mean, we have, we have, I think, a sense that this is, this will work, or there are, but the citations are way off. And we just don't want the applicant to have an issue once we approve this and they go financing when somebody discovers that this is, something doesn't add up.
Yes, Madam Chair, I do see the refusal letter citing Article 53 and 56 rather than 65.
Okay, so you know what? Can we have this deferred to the next meeting, please? No, I suppose it needs to be advertised correctly. So how long will that take for advertising?
Madam Chair, this is Tom. It takes about 30 days to advertise. We could probably do at this point, October 4th, I think, if we advertise this in form.
Okay, may I have a motion for deferral, please?
Motion for deferral, secretary.
Fortune?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Righiro?
Aye, I'm sorry.
Panado?
Aye.
Arajo's also aye. So we are looking at, Mr. Fortune, 10-4 at 11:30?
That is correct.
Okay, sorry about that.
Thank you.
Good catch, Madam Chair.
Wasn't mean, but thank you.
Okay. I did catch it. Madam Chair, it's now 11:03. I'm going to call the hearings that we had last Thursday.
How about this, Mr. Fortune, let's finish Hyde Park Ave., and then we will do everything together, okay?
With pleasure. Calling the next case, calling BOA 135238672 Hyde Park Avenue. This is demolishing existing structure, erecting six-unit residential building with six parking spaces. The violation is Article 55, Section 40, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 55, Section 4, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 55, Section 9, the lot width is insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 55, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small, have a business address of Thompson Road. With me today is the architect for the project, David Choi, who was also on the call. Madam Chair, just one correction with regard to the relief we are seeking. We are seeking relief to erect a building for six residential units, but we are providing no off-street parking spaces. And I'll come to that when I get to the parking sufficient violation. So again, we're here seeking relief to demolish existing structure, erect a building for six, six residential units. The zoning sub-district is a BF 5,000. Our lot size is 6,250 square feet. And the violations are as follows. Off-street parking, we're required to provide 1.25. We are providing none. So Madam Chair, originally, in the, the original plans for this proposal, we had provided six parking spaces underneath. But in meeting with the community, JP Neighborhood Council, and your butters, there was some issue with regard to entering and exiting the parking spaces off of Hyde Park Avenue. And as you know, Hyde Park Avenue is two lanes, in that section of Hyde Park Avenue, is two lanes both ways. And then the community thought that would be an issue getting in and out of the site. That being said, in addition, we are located directly across the street from Florence Hills Tea Station.
So got it. Go ahead, talk about the additional violations.
Sure. So we're also cited for FAR. The required FAR is 0.6. We are proposing 1.3. Lot width, lot width requirement is 40 feet. Our lot is 50 feet wide, so we think that we were cited here erroneously by the Inspectorial Services Department. With regard to the building height, Madam Chair, in this zoning sub-district, the building height requirement is three stories at 35 feet. We are providing three stories at 32 feet, seven inches. So we're coming in below the 35-foot requirement as well.
But as far as the number of stories, you're at three stories.
That is correct.
Okay.
Then the final violation was the side yard. The requirement is 10 feet, and we are providing six at the smallest space on both sides.
Okay, so tell us about the units.
Yep. So the first two floors, we have three bedrooms, two bath units, and are approximately 1,300 square feet. And on the third floor, we have two bedrooms, two baths, at approximately 1,300 square feet as well. We are providing no living space in the basement, as that is going to be for storage and bike racks with regard to the proposal.
And how's the design, is the design contextual to what's going on on that end of Hyde Park Ave.? Because I know there's that new construction across the street, but there are some older houses on this side of the street.
Right. So our proposal for a six-unit dwelling to the, if you're looking at this picture, it's currently shown, there's another six-unit building to the left of us. Directly to the right, there's a four-unit, and directly to the right of that is another six-unit building as well. So if you scroll down a little bit, I think, I was controlling the monitor, you'll see in context, if you scroll down, I think, two more slides, you can see how it fits into the, that's the existing picture. But yeah, contextually, it fits right into the neighborhood with regard to the other six.
And I'm assuming that you will protect that street tree, et cetera. Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. I think it is consistent with the block and the street. And I think my only real question was, is the front yard setback in terms of, it looks a little bit further forward than some of the adjacent buildings, but we can address that with the BPDA design review. No questions from me further than that.
I need questions from the board. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, calling anyone with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. At this time, the mayor's office like to defer judgment to the board. Some background information on the community process. ONS held in a butters meeting on January 27th, 2022. The meeting was very lightly attended, but questions were raised by direct butters concerning green space, tree maintenance, as well as concerns relating to the building height and affordable housing. There's a lot of feedback in this meeting, but no opposition was expressed by attendees. This proposal receives support from the Jamaica Plain, the JPNC zoning committee. At this time, the mayor's office likes to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here. We do have two support letters.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Small, you know, the site may prevent this, but will any of those units be handicapped accessible?
David, do we have any handicap accessible units on that?
We do not have a handicap accessible unit, but we have made a provision to add anything that would be, if required to, so.
I mean, I'm just thinking about access from the street, because you are, you know, you do have a little bit of a slope. But, okay, so we heard from everybody.
Madam Chair?
Yeah?
Madam Chair, it's Paul Salim, City Councilwoman, Michael Firey's office, the council has all recorded support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. BPDA, BPDA have a recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. We recommend approval with design review.
You may have a motion, please?
Motion approved with BPDA design review.
Second. Fortune?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Righiro?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Panado?
Aye.
Arajo is also aye. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much. I'm chairman of support. Have a good day.
Madam Chair, it's now 11:11. I'm going to call the hearings that we had last Thursday, on August 18th at 5:00 PM at 10:10 Mass Ave. Case BOA 56548226 Union Ave. was deferred to the full board today. Case BOA 126515210 Carson Street was deferred till September 15th, 2022 at 5:00 PM. Case BOA 12955987 Rock Road was to remove an old red deck and build a bathroom addition, new red deck, it was approved. Case BOA 1332110200 Turtle Pond Parkway, reframing of the second floor, extended second-story height, was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 133519515 Maple Street was, was to replace a 77-foot with six-foot fence with a 77-8-foot fence. It was approved with proviso BPDA review for visibility and exterior and plantings. Case BOA 133710425 Roskin Road, it's a second-floor dormer addition, half-bath, it was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 1337466438 Main Street, in addition to the third floor, an attic playroom, was approved with BPDA. And no basement, no renewed space with basement space. Case BOA 1339956127 Train Street was a proposed second-floor addition, was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 134148274 Baker Street was attached two-pack garage and playroom, was approved with BPDA, with no bathroom above garage and a half-bath. Case BOA 13433014 Delano Park was renovating existing third floor, was approved with BPDA in attention to the, the design of the dormer. Case BOA 135069316 Meredith Street with extension of living space, was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 13518122 Amelia Terrace is adding in addition to the top of the building, second floor, was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 135968025 Farmington Road, respect a rear three-story addition, was approved with BPDA and parks review, and we have other G pod. Then on the rediscussions, case BOA 13361892005 Dorchester Avenue was extend driveway to the parked vehicles on the side of the house, it was deferred to the full board on 10:04. Case BOA 1343120330 K Street was denied without prejudice. That concludes the subcommittee before.
Motion to accept the recommendations of the subcommittee.
Second.
Fortune?
Aye.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Righiro?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Panado?
Aye.
Arajo's also aye, so motion carries.
For anybody who wasn't on early, I'm going to call the 10:30 hearings for any deferrals or withdrawals. If you don't hear me earlier, if you could just give me the address, you are going to defer your project at 10:30. Bearing none, I'll call the first case.
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Fortune. May I make, just make a quick comment? There are a number, some of the projects coming up. We have received a lot of comments in support and in opposition. I will recommend that each applicant figure out five people to speak in support, five people to speak in opposition. We would like to hear new information from each speaker, and these five exclude elected officials or representatives of elected officials. It is now 11:15. The board will take a 10-minute break and will resume at 11:25. Because I noticed there are a large number of recent attendees, I will read portions of my opening remarks for this virtual hearing. So the City of Boston Zoning Board of Appeal hearing for 8/23/2022 continues to be in session. It is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law. Going on to a later part of the opening comments, as with our in-person meetings, comments in support will be followed by comments in opposition. The order of comments is as follows. Elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project. That is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again, and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand, and star six to unmute yourself. Again, star nine to raise and lowers your hand, and star six to unmute yourself. As I mentioned before, I would like to have five people on those projects where there is a great demand to be heard. Five people in support, five people in opposition. Use your time before the case gets called to organize. Mr. Rijero, I may have to ask you if you can continue to be, if you can function as secretary, because our secretary has a previous commitment at 1:00. But definitely.
Madam Chair, just so you know, Tom has stepped in if need be.
Okay, I'd rather have a follow protocol and have a board member read it. Secondly, I know for the reconsideration, in the event that a six-member board is not, will be... If a six-member board will be seated when the case for 82 to 84, Boston Street Ward 7 is called, I just will put you on notice that I know you had requested a full board, so I just will put you on notice about that, okay? Given all that, let me do a roll call. Mr. Fortune?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Olick?
Sure.
Ms. Dong?
Present.
Mr. Rijero? Mr. Robinson?
Here.
Ms. Panado?
Here.
And I do see Mr. Rijero.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was muted.
No worries, let's go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call the 10:30, the first case. Calling Case BOA 1320542114, Leister Street. This erecting new two-story high school structure, violation Article 51, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 51, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article 51, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney John Colgini, 10 Forbes Road, on behalf of the applicant, Austin Massepta High School. With me on this call is Richard Bisselli, the project architect, together with Rabbi Moshe Wilhelm, who is the principal of the high school. Massepta High School is an all-boys Jewish high school, which has been located at 114 Leister Street for close to a decade. Currently, Scott, the high school houses approximately 53 students, and the proposal before you is to erase the existing building and construct a new two-story school with five off-street parking spaces. The violations, as Mr. Fortune stated, FAR.5, we're at 2-4-1. Off-street parking, 13 spaces required, we are at five. I should note, the boys are not allowed to drive to school, and as most are from the immediate area, the boys take bikes and scooters to school each day. We have a side yard violation required as 12 feet, we're 12 feet one on left side, 7 foot 3 on the right side. The purpose of this proposal before you is to allow for the addition of approximately 17 students and allow for some social distancing issues discovered during the pandemic. Faculty will not be increasing, and there are no more than five faculty members at the school at any given time. The faculty also carports to the school to make use of, or makes use of public transportation to get to and from school. The proposed layout is the basement level will contain a lunchroom, kitchen, lockers, bathrooms, storage, and mechanicals. The ceiling height is nine feet, and there are two stairways for egress. The first floor has four classrooms and some offices, and the second floor has a classroom, a library, bathrooms, and open meeting space. That's pretty much the proposal. If you had any answer or any questions, like I stated, the principal, together with the architect, were on this call as well.
Yes, so there's five off-street parking provided. There's five faculty. How about other support staff? How many staff in total, including faculty?
That is it. So if anyone given time, there'll only be five, I'll say adults, but staff on premises.
Okay, got it. Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans look good, no questions, very straightforward in terms of the proposal. I don't have any questions for the proposing on that.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Frank Mendoza, Alston Brighton, liaison for the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services here, deferring to the judgment of the board. The applicant had an Butters meeting July 6th. The Butters had some questions and concerns, which the applicant addressed and answered and offered to me with the Butters offline. The applicant also attended the July 14th meeting of the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association Civic Group and received the support of that civic group as well. At this time, I'd like to defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary, we do have one letter of support and four letters of opposition. That's one, yes.
Mr. Fortune, what's the opposition based on?
They're opposed to the project, rodent problems, keeping up with the textual of the area.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
This meeting is being recorded.
So given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, take a second, let's have some money.
Oh, yes, thank you for reminding me. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition?
A few raised hands here. Ellen, can you state your name and address for the record, please? Want some data? I'll go to Barry Brown. Can you state your name and address for the record, please? Want some data?
Can I hear from, if anybody who has a raised hand, who is not an Butter to the project, please lower your hand. If you're an Butter, please keep your hand raised.
Sarah?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you state your name and address?
My name is Sarah Turner. Yes, I live at 1776 Commonwealth Avenue in Brighton, and my son attends the Massepta High School.
Thank you.
Sure, I am very much in favor of the project. The building is obviously already a school.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Allen.
Okay.
We do have Emily from Counselor Murphy's office. Emily, go ahead. Are you looking to give testimony here? You're on mute. In the meantime, I'll go to caller 781888. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Can you?
All right, go ahead. Are you looking to give testimony here? Okay, I'll go to Roberta and Ben. Can you state your name and address for the record, please? Not sure what the issue is here, but if you are looking to give testimony for this project.
Can you hear?
Benjamin Murmelsing, do you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you.
Are you an Butter?
I am an Butter, yes.
Please put your name and address on the record.
96 Goodenough Street. Danny Upton, BEN, UPTON. I'm also representing 25 Butters. I have signatures, I've submitted to Flaherty, Brayton, Counselor, Murphy's offices, basically.
Have you submitted it to the board, because that's where it counts?
Yeah, I emailed it to Colleen Kennedy, at the Zone Board.
Thank you, so you're in...
She should have it.
You're in support?
I'm in opposition.
An opposition, and for what reason?
Rodents and overcrowding.
Overcrowding, and explain that a bit?
Well, there are 55 students there. I don't understand why they can't just keep it at 55 and moving up to 70 seems excessive. And the rodent problem in Alston, Brighton, has been out of control due to the 12 commercial structures that basically are sprinkled right around our neighborhood, and it's been pretty bad. Everyone has had to put money into their house to wrap through their homes.
Oh, that's common, I think it's a statewide problem, but thank you.
Yeah.
Next caller, please.
Benjamin Murmelsing. I am the executive director of Torah Academy, representing 100-plus families, of which 80% live within a mile radius of the project.
And you're in support?
I am in support. I also have a child in the school and live within a three, four-minute walk.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry to rush you along, but we just jammed hot today, so thank you for your patience.
So Butter, go ahead. Hi, I'm Roberta Upton, I live at 96 Goodenough Street. I am an Butter. My husband was just talking before. I just want to comment more on what he was saying.
No, thank you, we are good, thank you.
But...
Can I have...
No, you're just cutting a crap.
Is there a representative from the BIAA on? Can I have everybody muted? Is there a representative from BIAA on? Okay, so, given, and BPDA, did you have a recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jeff Hampton, BPDA, we recommend approval with design review.
Okay, may I have a motion? Okay, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review. Second.
Fortune?
Aye.
Ehrlich?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Ruggiero?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Panato?
Aye.
Araujo is also in support, so motion carries with approval with design review, and we will ask the applicant to make a strong effort and do everything to the best of their ability in their construction management plan to deal with the rodent issue in the community.
Thank you. Every one. Calling the next case, calling BOA one-three-two three-five-five-eight sixty-three Belgrade Avenue. This is the race of one-story building in a rected four-story thirty-one-unit apartment building with amenities, space of thirty-four thousand ninety-six square feet, thirty thousand one hundred fifty square feet, with twenty-two garage parking spaces underneath with elevator access.
Calling, that's all.
The violation is Article sixty-seven, section twelve, excess of height. Article sixty-seven, section twelve, the number of allowed stories has been exceeded. Article sixty-seven, section twelve, excess of FAR. Article sixty-seven, section twelve, insufficient side yard setback, abutting the residential sub-tenant. Article sixty-seven, section twelve, insufficient graveyard setback. Article sixty-seven, section eleven, one-story residential conditional, is conditional. Article sixty-seven, section thirty-two, insufficient parking. Article sixty-seven, section thirty-two, insufficient looting bays, areas are proposed. And Article sixty-seven, section thirty-two, parking space design, sizes, and maneuverability. Name and address for the record.
Hold on, before anybody gets on, this is a project we've gotten a lot of feedback on via email. I would like to ask five members of the community who are in support and five members who are in opposition, to use the time now to raise your hand and to decide who will speak. I will require and ask everybody to give us new information, okay? New information only. If something you have, are interested in, has already been commented on, just put your name and address on the record, okay? So, thank you. Applicant, put your name and address on the record.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz, Adam Zimmerency with the business address of one-sixty-eight H Street, South Boston. With me today is the applicant, Michael Ford, and as well as the architect, Jason Heintz. The project is located on two houses of land located on Belgrade Ave and Roselandale neighborhood, which consists of approximately thirteen thousand one hundred square feet. The current site is a vacant one-story funeral hall. This proposal proposes to construct a new four-story residential rental building with thirty-one units, totaling approximately thirty-four thousand and ninety-six profloor area. There will be twenty-three below-grade parking spaces and thirty-one bicycle parking spaces. This proposal went through an extensive BPDA Article eighty small project review, and was.
So, talk, please talk to us about the, about the, what is being proposed, you know, go and talk us through it, we'll hear about community process elsewhere.
So there are fifteen one-bedroom units and sixteen two-bedroom units, all ranging from seven-hundred-and-seventy-nine square feet to a thousand-and-eighty square feet.
Again, I'm sorry, the two bedrooms range from what?
All of them range from, even the fifteen one-bedrooms range from seven-hundred-and-seventy-nine square feet to one-thousand-and-eighty square feet.
Okay, and how many IDPs?
We're gonna have six, we're gonna be in line with the mayor's initiative of twenty percent. So four of those units will be at seventy percent AMI, and two will be at one-hundred percent AMI. Project is located within the neighborhood shopping district, will be in need of a conditional use permit for the first story being residential. FAR, which being proposed here, is a two-point-six, allowable by code is a one-point-oh. As you can see, is that we're seeking a variance on the height. What's being proposed is four stories and forty-three feet. The fourth floor, you could see from the plans, is actually set back in the rear towards the train tracks, which is our abutter in the rear of the lot. The minimum, the minimum rear yard, as you can see, is what's required is a ten feet is allowed. We're proposing four-and-a-half feet to the abutting MBTA tracks. We're actually ten feet away from the dwelling to the property line, but because of the decks in the rear brings us, brings us to five-and-a-half feet. Parking violation, we, it was an extensive process through the Article eighty, worked together with the Boston Transportation Department, which derived the actual parking spaces at twenty-three total spaces, including the thirty-one bike stations. There will also be an additional bike station.
What is required under zoning for residential use?
It is, is two spaces per unit.
So that would be sixty-two, okay?
Correct.
Okay, and then talk to us about the side yard setback from the abutting existing residents.
Hi, this is Jason Armazza for Architects, business address at three-fifteen A Street, Boston. The buildings aren't parallel to each other, but the building on the left is, ranges from fourteen to seventeen feet from our, our building, and the building on the right would be nineteen to twenty-one feet.
And so, from the adjacent residential use, what's required from zoning?
From, from the adjacent residential use?
Yes, there is a residential structure adjacent to this property, what's, what's required by zoning for the side yard?
So if we can pull up the, so the side yard requirement, hold, bear with me one We are not seeking a variance on the, on the, on the side, actually, we are.
We are seeking, yes, and I don't know, and it could be both, both sides, because I noticed that you are to the property line on the.
That's, you're looking at, sorry, you're looking at the existing survey, if you can go one more down, we're, that's the proposed.
So Jason, if you can give the exact dimensions of what the chairwoman is asking for the side yard?
Yeah, so we're at, we're at fourteen-foot-nine on the right here, where we're gonna have a proposed driveway, which is actually, we're reducing, we're eliminating the setback on that side from the existing building, which was at the zero lot line, and then on the left side, we're at, it varies once again because of the property, but we're five feet from the lot line up to eight-point-two at the front.
And number fifty-seven Belgrade, I noticed was on, is on the market, does the?
Yes.
Does the property owner intend to purchase that?
No.
No, because it looks like this building is almost property line to property line. So tell us, is there any outdoor deck or anything like that proposed?
Yes, Madam Chair, there is an outdoor deck on the roof, which will be a common deck, which can be accessed by elevator, and there's also two stairways that'll be accessed. One thing I also do want to notate too, going back to actually the parking, is that there's currently two existing curb cuts on this property. One of the curb cuts, which is on the left-hand side, if you're looking at the building head-on, will be restored, and that will provide additional parking spaces back to, on street in the neighborhood.
Okay, the property owner owns a lot across the street, will that, is there any plan for use of that?
Michael is here with us today.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that, so that, that property actually, we do not own, it was purchased by, I believe, the TCB Bank in Roselandale Square.
Okay, so, so we can expect another development on that side, I assume?
They're currently using it for parking, the bank purchased it, so I don't know what their intent is, but right now it's being used for additional parking, because their lot at the bank, I think, is smaller than what they need for the customers.
Okay, so can you show us what the proposed building would look like when all is said and done?
So Jason, we'll just need the exact page number, I believe it's towards the end of the.
Yeah, I think you're gonna have to keep scrolling here. Yeah, this, this is a perspective looking down Belgrade Avenue, this is the entrance of the building. We're taking design cues from Roselandale Square, with some of the articulation with brick, in addition, grabbing some of the rhythm from the buildings further down Belgrade Avenue. That's the, a little bit of the context that we're grabbing from in Roselandale Square. If you go down three or four pages from here, there'll be a collection of renderings. Real quick, just on the, the, yeah. Front elevation here, and then there'll be a couple more as the following pages, and the rendering and context.
Madam Chair, as you can see from the front elevation, is that the fourth floor is set back, and then also, as you can see, is that the, the front of the building has been set back to comply with the front yard setback of the ten feet.
It's modal setback, okay. Let me see, there was one other thing, loading. What, is there loading provided on site?
Jason, I'm gonna defer to you regarding the loading and.
Sure, if you look at A one-hundred of the plans, we are proposing at the bottom of the garage ramp, there'll be a seventeen-foot place where someone can pull off their truck to load and unload, a seventeen-foot truck is adequate for, for providing loading and unloading for a two-bedroom apartment last. Oh, sorry, this one, yeah.
Okay, and so the roof deck is open, are there restrictions on hours of use of that roof deck?
I'm not quite sure, Mike, did you, when you went through the community process, was there conversations pertaining to the actual use and the hours of operation?
There was no, there was no conversation about that, but that is something that we definitely be open to hearing.
Yes, because, you know, we as the board hear a lot of issues about use of roof deck, especially if this is going to be rental, and access would be through, how many means of I?
Three, three means of access, so one would be access through the elevator, and then it's two, two stairways through the two head houses that are on the top.
Yeah, I think we would be willing to restrict access during, you know, nine or ten o'clock at night.
Okay, okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are, plans are good, you know, I think the context on the street is, it is consistent, it's obviously bigger than some of the surrounding buildings, but I think the bays on the front and brick with the setback help mitigate some of the height. And then, I just, I did want to make sure that there is, you know, the side yard on the right is increased, a visible unclear in that site plan, because they had the existing overlaid in the new, so there is quite a bit of setback on the right-hand side, the left-hand side's a little bit tighter. But in terms of the proposed project in terms of configuration, I have no real questions, and I'm not concerned as much about the rear setback, just because it is up against the MBTA track, so.
Yeah, because the, the thing I think about though, is, you know, the residents from those units, you know, feeling the impact every time one of those, because it is raised at that point, feeling the impacts of that railroad, that line going by.
I don't disagree with you, but I think that's, I don't think an extra ten feet's gonna help with that either, so I think that's.
Don't think so, okay. Because I know the building up by, holding by West Roxbury Parkway, because it's set back and it's at grade, you don't feel it, but I think, and we approved the ones on Quarry that seemed to be, but it was, seemed to be almost completed, but they had access to the garage on that end of it. Just kind of thinking through what we've seen.
Good points, thank you, no question.
Is, any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I think Mr. D'Amico has spoken, I don't know if he's on.
Yes, Mr. Fortune, it's Bob D'Amico, Boston Transportation Department. I'd like to request a proviso that the proponent, work with myself, with regards to clarifying the parking design, the turning radius, there are several concerns I have, I'm looking forward, the board with this, but I'd like to have a proviso to work with the proponent, just to clarify some issues I have with the parking design. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak? Okay, so.
Good afternoon, or good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Luke Moshi, with the mayor's office, neighborhood services. BPDA held a meeting for this on March thirty-first. From the community, there were concerns about, sorry, there were some concerns about parking. A lot of people were in favor of this as long as it was going to parking, or they wouldn't use parking spots. There were some people that had some concerns and wanted it to be smaller, because it didn't go with the look of the community. Due to the green space, some community members were in favor of this project, but my office has received two letters of opposition and one letter of support, and the mayor's office would like to defer judgment to the board.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we do have members of opposition and on support.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jordan Frias here from Counselor Ricardo Royal's office, we'd just like to go on record in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Solis, Councilor Elijah Michael Flaherty, Councilor John Reddick in support.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Emily Polston from Counselor Louise Jean's office, we would like to go on record in support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jack Staley from Counselor Murphy's office, prepared voices of both support and opposition, support from local groups and organizations in the area, opposition from some of the small businesses, as well as direct abutters, with all that considered, we'd like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Now, start with John Sullivan, and then Alan Wright, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Just, anybody, anybody who's not an abutter, please lower your hand, and miss, and anybody who's on, I noticed there is not enough representation from people who are on the phones, so if anybody who's on the phone and is interested in speaking, please raise your hand. I will again ask that you keep your comments to, as, as direct as possible, okay? So go ahead.
Hi, my name is Alan Wright, I live less than three blocks away, I'm in support of this project as it's proposed.
Alan, please put your name and address, your real address on the record.
Ninety-eight Birch Street, Roselandale, Alan Wright.
Thank you.
And I want to go on record in support of this project as it's proposed. I want to address briefly the issues about not enough parking. This building is one block from the commuter rail station.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Hold on, hold on, hold on, I will ask anybody to not use transportation, multimodal transportation, because we also know that the cost of transportation on that commuter rail is high and beyond the reach of some residents with limited incomes. So I would like to just leave that aside, and just go and please talk to us about, about the project. Can I hear from the next person?
Stuart Henry, can you state your name and address, please, for the record?
Hi, I'm Stuart Henry, eighteen Cliftondale Street in Roselandale. I'm in full support of this also, I think this is gonna be great for the community, it's a three-minute walk down to this, to the square, it'll be great support for the new coffee shops and restaurants down there, and all the shops in general.
Thank you. Dr. Irene, can you state your name and address for the record, please? Michael Flaherty, name and address for the record, please, once you unmute yourself.
Hello?
All right, go ahead.
Hello?
Can you state your name and address for the record?
This is Dr. Irene Goranitis, I am a direct abutter, I own the properties next door, fifty-five and fifty-seven Belgrade Ave, I have an office on fifty-seven Belgrade Ave, where I practice on an occasional basis, and I am in full support of this project, I've lived in the area for the past fifty years, and I think it would be a good thing for Roselandale and the Roselandale residents in Roseland Square. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Harney, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hello, my name is Joseph Harney, I live on three-seventeen Belgrade Ave, I'm a lifelong resident, I am in full support of the project, I believe it'll bring more professionals to the community like myself, and I am in full support. Thank you.
Andrew, can you state your address for the record, please?
Yeah, Andrew, seventy-nine Belgrade Avenue, I'm in full support, the only issue is I think it has too many parking spaces. The only issue is I think it has too many parking spaces. I wish there were few spaces, but otherwise I support.
Good. Harry Saris.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Saris. I live at 85 Belgrade Avenue, which is three doors down from where this building is proposed to be put up. I am in opposition. There is already a lack of parking for the residents who live on that street. There definitely should be more parking spaces for the amount of units proposed. If anything, you should reduce the unit and increase the parking spaces. Thank you.
John Mendez, name and address for the record?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Thank you. I'm John Griffin, 19 Brookfield Street. I'm speaking in opposition. In addition to the things that have been mentioned, the lack of commercial use on the first floor, the placement of the funeral home that I've used before is important. Also, I have a bedroom that faces where the deck will be. I'm very much in opposition of them building a deck for use. And so a three-story building more in line with what was built at 46 Belgrade Avenue with, with more parking and with commercial use, I think would fit the neighborhood a lot better. Thank you very much.
Elizabeth Muser, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, my name is Megan Alves, and I'm here with Jose Alves. We are both resident and property owner at 75 Belgrade Ave. Obviously, the building is way too close to our property line. We are, actually, the current fence is actually in the incorrect location, so it's even closer to our property line than in these designs. We have issues with parking, obviously. There's a lot of parking issues on the street. There's not enough crosswalks. The amount of families going to be put inside that building to be crossing the street to get to their cars on the other side of the street multiple times. They have been nearly hit by cars on Belgrade Ave because of that. And yeah, basically, we're very much opposed to this building.
Yeah, and the height of the building is also issue. It's going to completely block our building. And if we're four floors high, you know, we're going to be totally losing all the view that we overlook Rosendale Square. So it's really, I don't have any problem with the building there. This is just too big, and it has to be worked out better than that. So we are opposed to that.
Good morning.
Yes, 49 Augustus Avenue, Laurel Radman in Rosendale. Good morning. I wish to testify in opposition. I'm going to summarize the opposition of the Rosendale Square small business community who submitted letters that you have. These are the letters that I'm aware of. Fifteen different small businesses are represented by the owners, managers, and employees who submitted the letters. Seventy-five percent of the 12 owners who oppose in writing are Latinx, Black, Asian, and immigrants. Eighty-three percent are women. Other owners have voiced their opposition, however, they will not submit written testimony for fear of losing customers. You received 40 letters from customers, the majority of which are Rosendale residents, vast majority, and they oppose the development. They support their businesses. The square lost 31 two-hour parking spaces as a result of the BTD's street changes and around 10 are temporarily lost from municipal lot. And the vast majority of the 31 losses were experienced by immigrant and white pock owners. Project will make the parking situation worse. By my calculations, it will review with the BPDA. The streetscape changes will likely cost another four to six parking spaces, so we're asking that you deny the variances. Thank you very much.
Can you keep going, Madam Chair?
Well, we only have a couple more people. Alex G. Burko and Mr. Perez, Minor Perez.
All right. Okay, Alex, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Alex G. Burko. I live and own Seven Otis Place in Rosendale, and I am in support of this project here. I'm happy with the neighborhood and citizens.
Okay. So, um, the, um, let's see.
Good morning.
Anna?
Good morning, my little chair, members of the board. Minor Perez, representing the carpenter's union, would like to go on record in support of the project.
Thank you. Okay, so I think we've all heard about support, opposition, and the impact on the neighborhood. I think that this, my, my, my concern is the four-story and the impact on the abutting residential use. But I do think there's a lot of merit in this case. So may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPAD's design review, and I think, not sure it's possible, but it would be nice to, if they could focus on the left-hand side yard, to see if there's any opportunity to increase that side as it relates to that abutting problem.
As to why the BTD, Mr. Robinson?
Oh, yes, sorry. And Mr. D'Amico in BTD on the.
Yes, and I, I think with that side yard increase, that shouldn't include any option for moving that, the fourth floor back, so it's not such a.
Back on the fourth floor.
Yes.
I think that's a, I think that's a, that's a good, that's a, that'd be helpful. Yes, I agree.
But it's not just a thick wall that the butters are looking at.
Yep, I agree with that.
Okay, so, let's see.
I'll second that.
You'll second that? So Fortune?
Aye.
Alec?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Ruggiero?
No.
Robinson?
Yes.
Panado?
Aye.
Five.
Arajo is aye, but I do have reservations about the, the look of the building, the closeness to the railroad tracks, and the obvious parking impact it will have. And also the fact that there are no three bedrooms to accommodate families in our neighborhood, which may be tipping the scale somewhere else. So motion, however, carries, so good luck.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, it's now 12:05. I'm going to call the 11:30 re-discussions. Do you want to make a comment again? I am leaving.
Yes, so again, the, this board will, within an hour, lose a member to other, to other requirements, so we will have a six-member board. If anybody is uncomfortable with a six-member board, can request a deferral to a later date when there is a seven-member board. Soon after that, we will lose another member to some other commitment, so just have that in mind. So if anybody, so if you want to request a deferral, administrative deferral, please feel free to do so. Especially making note to the applicant who is scheduled for noon time to have your appropriate discussion still prior to then. But, so go, so go ahead.
I will call at 12 o'clock as well. Madam Chair, about this, it's the 11:30 re-discussions. For anybody who is deferring or withdrawing, if you can give the address, please?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I'm actually not deferring, but I'm more of an inquiry. I have a matter that I believe one member will need to recuse, and I know that's on further down the list at 11:30. My concern is we've deferred several times before because of a five-member board, and I'm fearful that we'll also have a five-member board again when that case is called. I'm just wondering if it's possible to call that while Mr. Fortune is still present.
What is the address?
221 East Eagle Street.
Okay, we will call that out of sequence after 40 to 42 Cross Street.
Are there any other, just deferrals or withdrawals for the 11:30 cases?
Peter, I see your hand is up. I'm sending a request on mute. Are you looking for the deferral? Oh, there you go, okay, 40 Lake Street?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Madam Chair, Peter Kohansky from Goldston and Stores, 400 Atlantic Avenue in Boston, representing the applicant, the comment for 40th Street. We to, we respectfully requested deferral until a hearing date in December, either December 6th or December 13th, to continue to work on the issues raised at the last hearing.
Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Second?
Second.
Fortune?
Aye.
Alec?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Ruggiero?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Panado?
Aye.
Arajo is also aye. Motion carries, the date, please?
We can do either, whatever the council would like to see, the 6th to 13th, we can do either one. Whatever's going to be, have me make them work. 6th to the 13th.
The 13th for the applicant, if that's the question.
We'll do the, December 13th at 11:30.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the 11:30 cases?
I would, Kevin Joyce here, 291 Beacon Street, Ward 5.
Okay, put the record calling DOA 1336832, 291 Beacon Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Kevin Joyce, 291 Office, 50 Frankel Street, Boston, Mass. This case is a bit controversial. I prefer to have.
You're requesting a deferral?
Yes, I am.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a, sorry. Fortune?
Aye.
Alec?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Ruggiero?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Panado?
Aye.
Arajo also aye. The date, please?
We can do October 4th at 11:30.
October 4th at 11:30, fine.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the 11:30?
Hello, I, I'm unable to get onto chat. I don't know why.
You requesting a deferral or not?
Yes, for 2628 Union Avenue.
Okay, so may I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
Second, um, Fortune?
Aye.
Alec?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Ruggiero?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Panado?
Aye.
Arajo also in support, the date, please?
We can do October 4th at 11:30. Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals?
Thank you.
For the 11:30 cases?
Okay.
I see your hand is raised. Are you looking for a deferral?
Uh, can we, can you please call 12 o'clock, please?
I am, I am, Madam Chair. I just want to make sure there's nothing else for 11:30. Okay. I'm going to call the reconsideration for 12 o'clock. Are you going to defer or withdraw? Or are you going to move forward?
Hello? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry. So I, you're breaking up with me. I've been on hold for the 11:30, but it's coming in and out, and I'm here for 295 Webster Street in opposition, and I'm not sure if they'd defer it or not.
Madam, or Chair, no, sorry. You want to take care of that, Madam Chair?
Webster Street, we will hear that, but so stay on. Right, right, um, yep.
All right, Madam Chair, Webster Street must be moved forward.
Okay.
Okay, can I call? We call the next case, calling DOA 132829634 Oak Street. This is constructing a three-story, 20-unit residential building with 11 underground parking spaces, opposing one elevator. Violation Article 69, Section 11. Residential use on the first floor is forbidden. Article 69, Section 29, off-street parking and loading, and Article 69, Section 30.1, conformity with an existing building line. Name and address for the record, please.
Okay, before the, before we start getting any testimony, again, we have a mixed bag on our emails about support and opposition on Oak Street. So before we get started, I will ask people to raise their hands, five in support, five in opposition, and I want to hear from butters, please. Applicant, please go ahead. Mr. Polgeni.
All right, Madam Chair, I was on mute. I apologize.
No worries.
Morning, or good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney John Polgeni, 10 Fourth Road, on behalf of the applicant, Dermot McGregor. Also with us is Ryan Sprague from Embark Studios, who's the team architect. 34 Oak Street in Hyde Park. The zoning in this neighborhood is Neighborhood Shopping 2. Lot size is 9,747 square feet. This is an Article 80 project that was proved early this year. The proposal before you is to re-raise the existing funeral home, which has been vacant for approximately 10 years, and build a three-story, 20-unit residential building with 10, excuse me, 11 off-street parking spaces. Residential, I'll go to the violations, Madam Chair.
First, first, please explain to us what the project is before we go to the violations.
It's a raising an existing defunct funeral home and constructing a 20-unit residential development with 11 off-street parking spaces.
So please tell us the breakdown on the units. Is there a roof?
There is no roof.
Parking, okay?
There is no roof deck. There are nine two-bedroom units that are approximately 970 square feet. There are three studio units, and they're, they range from 550 to 600 square feet. And there are eight one-bedroom units, and they're approximately 664 square feet.
Is there common space?
We have common space, but this is not a compact living.
I know, but just asking. And tell us about the parking. Is there, what, what, what should we look at to see the parking?
So, I don't know if, Ryan, if you're on, if he could be on mute, Ryan Sprague?
Yes, I just sent a request to make him a panelist so he can start this video, but he'll be over 10 minutes.
You could scroll down, I could show it to you while we're waiting for him. So the parking's access, so this project is on the corner of River Street and Business Street, adjacent to the Hyde Park train station. The access to the parking garage is off of Business Street. As we went through, this is kind of an important piece, as we went through the Article 80 process, the BTD is, together with the Boston BPDA transportation engineers, thought that there's a triangle parcel that separates, that divides Business Street. There's two-way traffic on both sides of that triangle. The city requested as part of that doing this project that we discontinue the side of that, that would be closest to our building because they thought it was pedestrian hazard. And by doing so, and by doing so, we would provide a public park, a public park for the community in Hyde Park.
How large is this proposed park?
Um, it's probably the width of the street goes over to a triangle. I, I don't know. Ryan Sprague may be able to.
Second, a roof?
I'm sorry, I missed, I missed projects. I apologize, Madam Chair, I'm missing projects. So the parking on this project is access to Maple Street. You can see it on the bottom left.
I was a little confused, okay.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Okay. Okay, so access through Maple for, for 11 underground spaces, you're going to use a system to accommodate all of those?
Um, yeah. Yes, Madam Chair, and this was, again, came as a result of the BPDA process with the number of cars.
Okay, and is this an elevator building?
It is.
Okay.
So we have a lift just from the parking level to the first level. It's discontinued from there on up.
Okay, so let me just put that down, and then let's see, what else did I have?
Deferral, look at, or anything like that.
And can you tell us how many IDP units?
Sure, this is actually, we're at 20% affordability on this one. So we are providing four IDP four-to-one units.
What's the breakdown?
It'll be a cross-section between two bedrooms, one studio, and one bed.
And was there any thought to looking at three beds on this?
Some of the two beds are bigger. Wasn't a concern that we had, wasn't something that we heard from the community. I mean, you're going to hear from the community, obviously, as you know, but there really wasn't much thought about it, three bed units.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. No questions in terms of what is being proposed.
Any questions from the board?
Could you just be a little more specific about the IDP? How many two-bedrooms and one-bedrooms and the affordability?
Um, yeah, so there would be probably two one-beds and one two-bed and one studio, and I think those affordabilities are 70% to 100%, somewhere in that range.
Okay, Mr. D'Amico?
Yes, Madam Chair, lady, and members of the board, Bob D'Amico, BTD. Because of the. Um, because of the proximity of, uh, exiting, uh, the parking, uh, area, I'd like to see, um, the proponent, uh, install an audio and a visual, uh, alarm to warn, uh, you know, pedestrians of oncoming vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you. And last question for the, uh, for counselor. Um, how, what does this look like in context of the abutting properties?
Uh, next, so there's, um, diagonally across the street from this Madam Chair is the Most Precious Blood Church. If you are looking at this building, or the proposed building, to the left of it, uh, there is a funeral, a current and operating funeral home. To the rear of it is the Blue Hills Bank parking lot, uh, central paint, um, all that strip of stores that you see along River Street, and to the right of it is residential. So, we bought a residential on the right-hand side, so we comply with the side yard setback, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Robinson, did I ask you how the plans are? Okay?
Yes, you did, thank you.
Thank you, any questions from the board? Uh, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Danielle Fonseca with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office has received several letters of opposition that have also been sent to the board for review. Some of the abutters of the project have stated that there's a concern for the number of units that are being proposed in addition to the potential noise pollution, trash, and additional traffic in a congested area. There are some abutters that have concerns for the building not conforming to the character of the neighborhood. They have stated that some schools, churches, residents, and all organizations in the surrounding area depend on favorable traffic flow to provide their services, and feel that Oak and Maple Street would become too congested, and again, parking would become an issue, um, with the addition of this project. We've also received a letter of opposition from one of the leaders of the Group Park Neighborhood Association, um, who has stated, uh, she believes the project is too large and dense for the area and fails to provide, again, sufficient parking. The property abuts the Mount of Ponce Design Overlay District, um, and they believe the project's design is inconsistent with the historical nature of the neighborhood, as well as there not being enough green space and tree canopy. Um, we've received a letter of opposition from the High Park Neighborhood Association. Uh, the concerns expressed by the group echo the concerns of other letters we've received in opposition. Um, and received, uh, again, uh, residents noting that developers, uh, they promised further site plans, addressing residents' concerns, um, but the group said the plans were not provided. The Neighborhood Association believes the applicants have not shown, uh, the required elements to justify the exemption of the zoning code, specifically special conditions of the land denying reasonable use, demonstrable hardship, and finding harmony with the purpose and intent of the zoning code, and at this time, we would like to defer to the board for judgment, thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we have those letters the mayor's office brought up.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jordan here from Counselor Royal's office, we'd like to call on record and support of this proposal, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, also, City Councilwoman Michael Flaherty, uh, echoing the letters that the mayor's office received, we received, uh, letters similar in opposition. Uh, due to that fact, the council will call on record and opposition.
Okay, and I'll go to the attendees, start with Kim, and then go to Brian. Um, once I'm muted, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, good afternoon, this is Kim Isavito, I am a abutter at fifty-eight Oak Street, and I'm also speaking for Joel Webb and Valerie Webb, who were on this morning, but had to sign off, she had to go back to work. Um, she is in agreement with the things I'm saying. Her particular issue was concerning the setback, um, that is adjacent to her property at thirty-eight Oak Street.
So, so, so can we, may I just interrupt, you're in opposition?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so please bullet point for me, so it's, it's, you know, bullet point for me what your opposition is.
Okay, um, the close proximity to her house and the excavation required for the garage, inappropriate building size and scope for the neighborhood, because we are in a historical and protected neighborhood, um, oversized number of units on a lot size of nine thousand seven hundred and forty square feet, um, over, over just eleven parking spaces, uh, without any visitor parking spaces for twenty units, this is already a very congested street and a permanent street. Um, loitering, just public safety...
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
May I ask other speakers to add additional information rather than repeat, uh, what, um, what the first speaker has, has articulated?
Brian, go ahead, uh, name and address for the record.
Uh, who's, you're on mute.
Yeah, go ahead, Brian?
Yeah, how, oh, here we are.
Are you looking to give testimony, because you just needed yourself? If not, I'll go to Eve, can you state your name and address for the record, please, once I'm muted?
Do you see a... Yeah, I'm, I'm on mute, this is Brian. Look at, I'm down to four percent.
Please, everybody hustle along, um, and just give us, put your name and address and tell us you're in support or opposition.
Okay.
Okay?
Uh, Victor, go ahead. Go ahead.
This is, this is Brian Putnam. I'm a direct abutter directly across the project from, uh, Oak Street, and I live at thirty-six Maple Street, High Park. And I'm in, and I'm in opposition to the, uh, I'm in, I'm in opposition to the project for, uh, several reasons. I will get into something I don't think anybody else has gotten into. On the plans, they show, on the plans, they show, it's slide one of the plans, they show basically that the, uh, existing sidewalk on the, on the corner of Oak and Maple is actually approaching the property line.
Okay.
They're, they're planning on shoving out the corner there a few feet.
Thank you, thank you. Can I hear from the next person? And, um, can we get, um, Mimi, Mimi, uh, unmuted, please, Eve slash Mimi, unmuted?
Okay, um, six one seven three six four, and we'll go to Mimi.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Hi caller.
This is Craig Martin. Madam Chair and Board, Craig Martin, Coachest Street, High Park. I just wanted, I just wanted to let the board know that the community process was flawed in that this being a Neighborhood Design Overlay District, it meant, it mandated that they receive Boston License, uh, Boston Landmark Commission review. They refused to subject this to a Boston Landmark Commission review, and that is in violation of Article sixty-nine.
Thank you.
This is a Neighborhood Design Overlay District, I thank you.
Musing, there's a Mimi, I don't see that name.
Uh, she's in, uh, Eve, she's in, uh, Eve. I saw a chat from her that she's representing the High Park, um, association.
Okay, um, go ahead, Eve, are you sent a request to unmute you?
Yep, that's me, thank you. Um, good morning to the board and Chair Arugio, um, I am the, the president of the High Park Neighborhood Association. The Neighborhood Association has been working with the residents at thirty-four Oak. We spent a significant amount of time, um, discussing the project, meeting with the developer, um, proposing alternatives. Um, the, we waited and waited, and the, the residents waited for, um, a response to the alternative proposal that was sent to the developer in, uh, in a community meeting, never received it. Uh, they have a vision for this project site, which comports with the neighborhood. Uh, I think that the residents have stated that, and also...
Can, can I just move to the chase, are you, uh, was the vote in...
Uh, we're in opposition.
Okay, thank you.
We are definitely in opposition, uh...
Thank you. Okay, so, um, Ms. Ambassador, anybody else? Okay, if there's nobody else, Mr. Poggi, you give us a minor rebuttal.
Hold on, this is, this is Brian Putnam, I wanna have a chance to speak.
Um, uh, did you, did you speak already?
No, I didn't, you cut me off, uh...
No, no, no.
What had happened, they asked me...
I'm done, okay, I'm done with testimony. I need to hear a quick rebuttal from Mr. Poggi, and let's go ahead with the vote.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, um, you know, I appreciate all the comments that came through, uh, if you listen to what the concerns are. Mainly, they're talking about height and density of this proposal. If you look at what the, what the violations were on this, we did not have a height violation, we did not have an FAR violation. Our violation, in most part, is related to first-floor residential, which commercial was not desired in that neighborhood, and parking, which, as came, as you all know, is a result of the Article eighty process. So, the argument that, you know, this building is, doesn't comport with what the community has asked for, comports with the underlying zoning, and the building itself is not in violation of either size or height or FAR or any of that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so given all that information, um, may I have a motion, please?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve with, uh, BPA design review.
There a second?
Second.
Um, let's see, Fortune?
Aye.
Olick?
Opposed.
Dong?
Opposed.
Rugiro? Robinson?
Aye.
Panado?
Aye.
Rugiro?
Sorry, I, I, I'm in support, I was muted, sorry.
Okay, so that's four in support, I'm in opposition, so motion does not carry, it's been denied.
Madam Chair, this is Tom, can I suggest that the board vote again until it's, uh, maybe it's denial without prejudice or...
Um, it's, um, we, I mean, we, uh, it is denied because we do not want to see the project as it is again, okay? Can we move, um, to, um, Cross Street, and then, which was the other case that we said we'd hear?
East Eagle.
East Eagle, okay. So, we are running out of time, um, so I just wanna move to Cross Street. Within Cross Street, whether it's in support or in opposition, whoever makes the motion, I, um, need you to, um, give me more information about why we're in support or in opposition when there is a motion made, okay?
Fine.
Again, because there's a lot of, um, information, you know, a lot of emails that we've gotten, both in support and opposition. I'd like to limit, uh, it to five abutters in support, five abutters in opposition. Um, and, and so, let's, let's move, okay?
Calling the next case, calling DOA one three three seven four nine nine, forty to forty-two Cross Street. This is new construction of a hundred-and-thirty-four-room hotel with ground floor, open-air public passageway, a catillo park, hotel lobby, restaurant, tenant restaurant, and seasonal rooftop dining terrace. Project also includes major redesign of Cross Street Plaza and improvements to Morton Street. Violation Article twenty-five, section five, flood hazard district. Article thirty-two, section thirty-two dash four, this is in the groundwater conservation overlay district. Article fifty-four, section twelve, restaurant use on the ground floor is forbidden. Article fifty-four, section twelve, restaurant use on penthouse group floor is forbidden. Article fifty-four, section twelve, hotel use is conditional. Article forty-nine A, section three, this is in the GWOD, our applicability. Article fifty-four, section thirteen, maximum floor area. Article fifty-four, section thirteen, the maximum building height is a lot, has been a lot, one-story. Article fifty-four, section thirteen, the minimum ready yard insufficient. Article fifty-four, section fifteen, establishment of the Freedom Trail Neighborhood Design Overlay. And article fifty-four, section eighteen, roof structure restrictions. Name and address for the record, please.
He's just promoted to panelist, so he'll be able to unmute himself shortly.
Madam Chair, if I just may speak on G card, Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust.
Yes, go ahead.
Good morning, good afternoon, sorry, uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both letters from the applicant.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have those as well, as well.
Thank you.
Um, Madam Chair, my, uh, attorney Joanna Schneider is looking to be promoted to a panelist. This is William Calder, the, uh, the proponent.
Okay, making a panelist as well, can I just ask if anyone else is on the attendee section and they need to be a panelist because they'll be speaking on behalf of a project for your part of an elected official's office, please raise your hand so we can get you in the right place.
Good afternoon, uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, Joanna Schneider, I'm an attorney at Himalaya Barnes, seventy-five State Street. I'm counsel for the developer. With me is Phil Calder, the developer, and Mike Doherty from TTR Project Architect. We are proposing a new five-story, one-hundred-and-thirty-four-room boutique hotel with accessory restaurant uses on a blighted parcel prominently located on the edge of the Greenway and the edge of the North End. Along with the hotel, we are proposing to dramatically improve the public realm, investing more than a million dollars in improvement to Cross Street Plaza and Morton Street to make these safe and welcoming spaces...
Uh, so, so counselor, can you go to the, the crux of the matter? Because these are a lot of violations, and I need to just have you, as the expert on this, talk us through this.
Yes, Madam Chair, there are two things that we're asking the board to do here today. One is that we do require a series of conditional use permits, um, for the hotel use principally, but also for the supporting residential uses and variances from this board. We also submitted to the board a detailed legal memorandum asking the board to take another look at the refusal letter issued by ISD, as we believe that they incorrectly applied certain provisions of section fifty-four eighteen of the code to the project. Is this...
Okay, is this just going to be a, a hundred-and-thirty-four-room hotel with, which is conditional use? The forbidden uses are restaurant, um, on the ground floor, and restaurant use on the penthouse and the rooftop, right?
That is correct, you're, uh, Madam Chair, with respect to the uses, we do also require relief because of the provisions of fifty-four eighteen. This board must approve any height in excess of the historical height on this site existing as of, uh, June first, nineteen eighty-five. We also require, um, to pardon, we have submitted the appropriate documentation for that.
Okay, so tell us about the height, what is the, what was the established height on June first, eighty-five?
It was one-story, Madam Chair, and we are now proposing to go up to fifty-five feet. This is our, um, which is the maximum height allowed under, um, Article fifty-five. This is where we do take issue with how, um, the ISD has cited us, because we do believe that we...
You know what, just give, just give me the facts, okay? So, the height, um, what was the height under, in, um, established under, in June first, whatever, what, what was the height, was that fifty-five feet?
No, it was one, it was one story. Seventy percent of the site on June first, nineteen eighty-five, was a one-story building, and then the balance of the site was actually a vacant parking lot.
Okay.
And we are now proposing to go up to fifty-five feet with some rooftop structures, which we believe are low, less than the ten percent required by the code. And we are doing this to accommodate this, um, boutique hotel, one-hundred-and-thirty-four units, um, again, as you noted, with ground floor, restaurant, and, um, overdeck.
Okay, so can you talk through, uh, let's see, the parking may be an issue, so talk through the parking, and what parking you're providing?
Um, Madam Chair, we are not required by zoning to provide any parking in this location, and in fact, we are not providing any parking.
Okay, so where, where will hotels stop and restaurants stop park?
Well, we do believe that we can leverage the fact that this site is extremely walkable and well-served by multiple modes of public transportation. We also believe, and have entered into some discussions preliminarily with some other garage operators in the area to provide what valet services might be necessary in concert with the project.
Okay, okay.
We should also note, Madam Chair, that we have been in discussions with BTD about working with them to identify additional overnight residential parking locations. Currently, because this site is vacant and blighted, there are folks who do use it as a parking lot, and we recognize that, um, some of those spaces would be displaced, and we are, as I said, working with BTD to find other places for those folks to park in the neighborhood.
Okay, and tell us about the flood hazard district, will there be any occupancy within the flood hazard district?
There will not.
Okay, um, okay, how are the plans, um, Mr. Robinson?
Um, the, the plans are good, uh, I think that, um, you know, I, I, there's, obviously, there's a lot of, uh, discussion around this project, um, you know, I think that, um, this is a, a somewhat of a gateway project, I think the, the, the goals of projects in this kind of, uh, condition need to be respectful of all abutting neighbors and, and sort of what their, uh, sort of impact might be. Um, I do think there, um, could be some more additional consideration on the rear of the building as it faces some of the abutting properties, but I think that, um, the merits of the project seem to be there, um, with potentially some additional work as it relates to the rear park and some shadowing, as well as the buildings around.
Okay.
And we do have some images of the project, if that would be helpful.
And did you do any shadow analysis on this?
We did do shadow, yes.
There is shadow analysis. I reviewed those through the Article 80 process. Those are online for anybody to review. There's, you know, there is around the park existing six-story buildings, actually, so there is minimal impact on the park in terms of some of the additional state per my review of those documents.
Okay, any questions from the board?
I'm just curious, we haven't seen very many hotels come before. Us people have argued that, in fact, they've shifted from hotels to residences. What makes the applicant think that a hotel will work in this location?
Well, we think that it's a special location for this because it does abut the Greenway and further down the Greenway, there are other hotel uses that have been successful. We know that Boston has high demand for hotels right now. We also heard from many of the folks in the neighborhood who do support us and I do want to note that there are 385 letters and signatures of support before you about this project. There is a real Airbnb problem in this neighborhood, so we hope that in addition to being able to provide hotel rooms for, you know, to support Boston's growing hospitality industry, that allowing a hotel at this location will alleviate some of the pressure within the neighborhood. We understand a lot of folks are bothered by Airbnb within the neighborhood.
Hold on, hold on, Ms. Snyder, I've just got to cut that right short, right there. Because this is a boutique hotel, it's a different price point from people who stay at Airbnbs. So, you know, I'm not sure that that is a viable argument, but in the meantime, any other information that might help us on this? Any other?
Mr. D'Amico has spoken on this, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Bob. Put your name and address on the record.
Yes, Madam Chair, Bob D'Amico, Boston Transportation Department. Madam Chair, members of the board, I have several concerns. I worked for Joe Parky for 11 years at this site and I know it very, very well and Parky has always been a vital issue and I'd like to request that the proponent give me specific details on how they're going to address the parking demand. Secondly, the resident parking program surrounds this building completely. And thirdly, the ones that park in the parking lot are the owners of the parcel. I know because that's where I used to park. And finally, I'm very concerned about the 70-foot distance from the drop-off point to the front door because this is going to be tough on the elderly and persons with disabilities as well as maybe a woman, you know, using a carriage to, you know, just take her child to the building. And so handicap issues and elderly issues and parking issues are my concern. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I respond? Because we did show very early in this process, and it did go through a full Article 80 process with the BPDA, we did show a variation of this with parking on the site. And what we were told by BPDA in no uncertain terms is that their vision of this site and of Cross Street was to create a pedestrian space. And so when we ultimately sought to respond to comments received from the BPDA, we removed parking and instead decided to invest in landscaping and other improvements to the Cross Street.
You know, I got it, you know, because, you know, we have, we tend to be very cognizant of the needs of handicapped people and people with carriages and things like that, so, you know, so that's something that needs to be kept in mind, maybe because we are in the older end of the cohort.
If we can show, Madam Chair, if we can show the plaza improvements.
So, no, hold on, hold on. I need to go. Any other questions from the board? Can I just start hearing testimony in support or in opposition and I really need people to raise their hands if they are abutters? Everybody else, lower your hand. Five in support, five in opposition. Let's hear from elected officials.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office like to defer judgment to the board. As the board is aware, this went through a community process led by the BPDA. We heard from a lot of residents that were in support of this proposal as well as a lot of residents who are in opposition to this proposal, including the two act specifics in the area, NURA and the NUC that were expressed strong opposition. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we do have those letters that the applicant just spoke up.
Senator Edwards?
Yes, my name is Eric. I am presenting Senator Edwards today. She would like to go on the record as opposing this project.
Sorry, everybody.
Good morning, Madam Chair, can everybody hear me?
Yes, please, go ahead, Counselor.
Great, thank you. My name is Gabriela Coletta. This is my first appearance before the board in my new capacity as Boston City Councilor. Before I begin my remarks, I acknowledge that brevity is important here, so I will be quick, but I would love to provide them without interruption, to provide my opinion and full context of my opinion. The location of the Cross Street proposal is a gateway and I cannot emphasize enough the importance of this site to the North End and the need to get it right from an urban planning perspective. As it stands now, there are vacant commercial spaces and in front of them, chaotic de facto pickup and drop-off spot for taxis, Ubers, and Lyft at that plaza. There is a potential here to welcome residents and visitors alike while improving the public realm in a way that maximizes the use of this precious downtown neighborhood location. There have been hundreds of millions of dollars spent through the big dig to beautify this area by removing the central artery overpass and replacing it with a beautiful green ribbon that runs adjacent to the North End. I am of the opinion that enhancements along this corridor that connect the North End to the Greenway within scale are a net positive for the community. Additionally, I believe that the public and all residents of the North End should have the opportunity to enjoy the Greenway in its use no matter what your socioeconomic status is or where you can afford to live. To that end, there have been calls to provide the much-needed housing supply on this site. Typically, that would be a compelling argument against the use of a hotel here. However, we know that those access to wealth will only use in perpetuity rather than broad swaths of North End residents and the public. I cannot in good conscience justify the potential scenario of a small group of homeowners to be the sole beneficiaries of the vistas that this site will provide. They've also committed and been cooperative in, to opening up multiple spaces in the proposal, including the roof deck, to the public and especially to North End residents and beloved organizations for events. They've also committed.
So, sorry, Counselor, Counselor, I'm still a little confused. Are you in support or in opposition?
I was getting there, Madam Chair. Other notable benefits to the community include public realm and transportation improvements, Morton Street and Cotillo Park connection from the Greenway, a commitment to invest in Cotillo Park and to maintain its perpetuity, local preference to community space, commercial space, excuse me, and support of local charitable organizations. So because of all of this, I don't believe, and this is what I'm getting to, I don't believe this project is terrible or would have a net negative impact on the community. This is my stance and I respectfully disagree with those who believe it would be. The advantage of providing civic amenities in a way that is equitable to all is enough for me to support this proposal. So I just want to clarify too, I am concerned about the city's process as it relates to a project of this importance. The proponent did embark on a nine-month-to-a-year community engagement process fulfilling their requirements, but it's my understanding that the city does not require them to go back to the community after BPDA approval. And so I believe that this is a policy opportunity and we should change this. I think that residents should have gotten another shot at looking at these plans and providing their feedback, but I do understand that this is the way to do it and thank you so much for your time, Madam Chair.
Thank you and good to see you. Can I ask everybody else to, please, give us bullet points? Five people in support, five people in opposition, thank you. Mr. Lyons from Rep's office?
Hi, Madam Chair, thank you, Patrick Lyons, from Representative Aaron Mike Wood's office. He understands that, you know, there has been both strong support and strong opposition on this project. He would like to stand in support of the project. He's, over the years, he's seen a number of proposals at this site. This is really the first one, you know, that fits with the neighborhood in regards to, you know, height and size. Furthermore, you know, this project will really help to, you know, liven and activate an area of the neighborhood which is, you know, dormant for generations. Furthermore, will also provide a safer environment for Cotillo Park with the connection to upgrade improvements to Morton Street as well as the connection to the Greenway. So he would like to be on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, the City Council of Life, Michael Clarity. In order to be competent where the major cities in the United States keep up with the demand, provide jobs and hospitality loss to COVID, the council would be on record in support. And if approved, he implores the proponent to address concerns of the neighborhood during each phase of construction. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I hear, I see two people with the same last name. If you're in the same household, will one person please lower their hands? Okay, let's just get moving. Please give us new information.
Go ahead, Marla. I'll start with Paul P. and then go to Karen. Paul, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is, good afternoon, my name is Angela Raco Lino and I live at one selling place in the North End and I am here with a group of third- and fourth-generation North Enders. We've lived here for over 70 years and we are in full support of this project.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Karen?
My name is Karen Crofton. I live at 26 Stillman Street. I'm a direct abutter to the proposed hotel. I am 100% in support of this project. The hotel will be built, will be a huge improvement to our neighborhood.
Thank you. Okay, Coletta?
Good afternoon, everyone. I am a direct abutter at 26 Stillman Street and I am opposed to 42 Cross Street for the following bullet point reasons. Number one, there's very many variances and violations to discuss, but my points will be that the public process really was not fully done. There is a huge height variance in regards to not counting the rooftop bar. The FAR is going from three to five, over five. Then there's a setback issue where it's going right to the edge on the back, up to the edge of Morton Street, where there will be probably only eight feet separation between 26 Stillman and the development. There will be no privacy, there will be no noise control issue.
There's no windows over there.
And there'll be increased traffic. There'll be increased traffic in that area because there is no parking. I do not believe that the people coming to the hotel.
Thank you, thank you. So I understand parking and density because you did talk about the FAR. Can I hear from the next person? Please do not repeat those two issues. Give us new information.
Karen Lemon, Steve?
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Yep. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yep, sure. My name is Stephen Shore and I live at 26 Stillman Street. I'm a direct abutter. And even though this hotel would probably end up raising the value of my condo, I'm fully against this project for the following reasons. Mostly because I think the foundation is fragile. I know that my building is on stilts in the ocean. I also know that there's a ton of rats underneath us that are dying to get out and there's going to be too much noise and all this is, is somebody trying to make as much money as they can for an understaffed hotel that is not needed in Boston. Thank you.
He wants the rights.
Thank you. Nicholas?
Yes, thank you. This is Nicholas Rivera, property owner of 7476 Stillman Street, 2-dash-4, sorry, 2-dash-4 Stillman Street, 74-dash-76 Stillman Street, the direct abutters to Cotillo Park. We'd like to say our strong opposition for these variances in particular. These variances would have a negative impact on our neighborhood. The variances actually serve no purpose to the development of the area and exist solely to maximize the number of hotel rooms.
Thank you, thank you.
Gregory?
Yes, I'm Gregory Hield. I'm also at 26 Stillman Street and I'm speaking in strong opposition to this project.
Thank you.
In addition to the rear setback, the roof deck and the restaurants that will be a wall of windows, of hotel windows, that will be between eight and 12 feet away from us. It is unbearable in terms of the way that I would be able to live in my apartment and I would be forced to leave where my current residence.
Thank you, thank you.
Mike Deb? Hi, Deb, you're going to mute it? Name and address for the record, please.
I'm not a direct abutter, but I have been a rare.
I'd like to hear from Director Jana, please.
Jane Reynolds, you're a direct abutter? Do I have to request I'm muted? Kirsten Hoffman, that's unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, this is Kirsten Hoffman. I'm a resident of 26 Stillman Street, so I'm a direct abutter. I'm also on the board of the North End Waterfront Residents Association. I'm also the president of Front of Cotillo Park. I would like to speak in opposition to this project. Among other things, the project will cast significant new shadows on Cotillo Park, a project that both the Parks Department and the City of Boston have put incredible resources into renovations of in the last couple of years. The project is the largest in the North End community in recent memory, will take up the entire block.
Thank you. I'm sorry, we're just so far behind schedule, so can I hear from another person?
Can they call Jane Reynolds, please?
Yes, go ahead, Jane. Go on, you're unmuted.
Good afternoon, my name is Jane Reynolds. We are the property owners of 20 and 24 Stillman Street, which are direct abutters. We are in support of this program and this hotel. We think it's a great thing for the North End and we think that it will be a great Greenway entrance into the North End.
Thank you. One more person and then we will hear a rebuttal from the attorney.
We call Frank Thorey?
No, 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 I don't want anybody taking over. I want to hear from the one more raised hand, from Mary Beth Sweeney, and then we move on, okay? Or if Sweeney's not available, Lorraine Foley, come on.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Yes, I would like to draw attention to the fact that this project.
So, hold on, put your name and address on the record and then.
Mary Beth Sweeney, 26 Stillman Street. I would be one of the many apartments drastically affected. I'm on the second floor. All of my windows would be blocked. I would be forced to leave the North End. But I would also like to point out that this, this project has not completed the proper public process. Please look at the letters from NURA and NUNIC that states that this, somehow this developer has skipped the public process and has gotten a pass and has landed on the agenda today. The public has not had a chance to speak and for this to be properly vetted, so I ask the council to please deny this request.
Thank you. So, we, so the attorney, please, a quick rebuttal and then we'll go to a decision.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. And just to address the questions about community process, this has been ongoing for more than two years and in that time, the developer has had more than 30 meetings with neighbors and that includes two presentations to NURA, two presentations to NUNIC, three IAG meetings and three public meetings that were held as part of the BPDA's Article 80 process. We enjoy broad support. 385 letters and signatures from abutters and others in the North End suggest that although there is some opposition, it is primarily limited to residents of one stack of units in 26 Stillman who do abut the building.
Sorry, go ahead. Can you wrap up, please?
Yes, of course. What I just want to say is that those residents of 26 Stillman already have their views blocked by an existing four-story building at 57 Endicott Street and this building has been designed to be pulled further back in order to provide some relief and a better condition for this. This is a project that will dramatically revitalize blighted site, it will improve Morton Street, it will improve.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry, I'm really getting tired because we have been inundated with letters, both in support and opposition and, you know, so people, and people have not been respectful of my request to be focused in their comments. So, given all that information, may I have a motion or any, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion, I think that the uses are appropriate. I think the height is reasonable.
So, hold on, I need to know what the hotel uses on the ground floor, no reason.
The forbidden use of a restaurant on the ground floor, I mean, I think that's acceptable to have a restaurant on the ground floor. The rooftop restaurant, also, I find.
The rooftop restaurant, also, I find that to be acceptable and very common in the surrounding areas, particularly as you go across the street towards North Station.
So what the motion, please?
The motion is to approve what BPDA does.
Second.
Fortune?
Aye.
Alec?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Regiro?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Panado?
Aye.
Rajo is in opposition, but motion carries with the proviso of approval with design review.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Madam Chair, unfortunately, I have to recuse myself from the rest of the meetings.
Okay, so let me call East Eagle Street. Let's see. A counselor?
Yes, Madam Chair, I think.
So, so, I think we need a deferral on this. We ran out of time. I didn't, so I'm sorry about that.
I understand. And just if I could ask when we do put it on, just to ensure that we do it, at least need a six-member board for the next hearing.
And did you, Mr. Regiro, did you anticipate that you would need to recuse yourself?
Yes, myself, and I don't want to speak out of term of things. Mr. Legris also needs to recuse himself, I believe, on this matter, so.
Okay, so let's see. Mr., let's see, Mr. Fortune, can you do us one last favor? And just read East Eagle into the record?
I can do that, Madam Chair. Hold on three seconds. Or we could try to do it in less than five minutes? Yeah, I know that.
No, I'm not shortchanging you, Mr. Lins.
Thank you. All right, calling case BOA 12556. I'm sorry, 1256992, 221 East Eagle Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, on behalf of petitioner.
Okay, your request is for a deferral, then, right?
That is correct, in line with the five-member board.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Second. Fortune?
Aye.
Alec?
Okay.
Dong? Dong?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Okay.
Panado?
Aye.
Yep, I guess all this crap that went into it, and it made no difference.
So the defer, and the date, please?
I'm being told by council we can do October 25 at 11:30.
October 25 at 11:30, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, so let's go. And so, Mr. Regiro, can you move with the next cases?
Yeah, let me just get my agenda in the right. Sorry.
Yeah, totally.
Can everybody?
All right. Well, mine was on so much. It has plenty of bad, it just died.
Excuse me, everybody, please.
I'm kind of thinking that they're selling in things from people, so we'll just take that momentum and put it into.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Regiro.
All right. Calling the next case, BOA 1339772, 33 David Street in Morty. Violations to Article 69, Section 8, usage forbidden MFRN2 family district. Article 69, Section 29, off-street parking and loading requirement. Article 69, Section 9, lot area ratio is insufficient. Article 69, Section 9, unusable open space insufficient. Article 69, Section 9.3, location of main entrance. Article 9, Section 2, change in and non-conforming use. The purpose is to change the occupancy from a three-family to a four-family. Scope does not include any exterior alterations. Changes all occur within the building envelope. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street in Spots, on behalf of petitioner with respect to 33 Davidson Street High Park. Madam Chair, just a quick background about how this came before the board. Our client had purchased this property via foreclosure. I purchased it as is with all existing conditions. During a recent finance transaction and how our office got involved, I was determined that the legal occupancy of this building was not correct. It does show legal occupancies three, however, there are four existing units in this building. We are proposing and asking the board to recognize the four units, without any change to the existing footprint of the building itself or anything with respect to the interior of the building. The units are.
So yes, any one, any basement unit?
There are no basement.
Okay, and then talk through the size of the units and the bedroom count.
So the existing conditions are that these are all two-bedroom units. The sizes range from about 580 square feet up to about 880 square feet for each of the units. And again, I understand that for new construction, certainly the units would be larger. But again, this is an existing condition when this property was purchased at foreclosure. With respect to the violations, this is already recognized as a pre-existing non-conforming use as a three-family.
Okay, counsel, hold on for a minute. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Lee, I guess I want to make sure there's no building code issues in terms of the sprinkler or anything moving to a four or any life safety issues. But other than that, no questions in terms of what's being, I guess, proposed to memorialize.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Danielle Fonseca with the Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services. The applicants completed the community process. They notified all abutters, and I hosted a community meeting that was held on May 25 of 2022. There were no comments or feedback for the proposal from abutters that were in attendance at the meeting. Additionally, the applicants attended the High Park Central River Neighborhood Group meeting in June and received no opposition from the group. Our office has not received any letters of support or opposition, and at this time, we would like to defer to the board for judgment. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jordan Freas here from Counselor Ricardo Arroyo's office. We'd like to go in support of the, we'd like to go on the record to support this proposal. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
And may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with no building code relief.
Second.
Fortune, Alec, sorry.
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Regiro?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Panado?
Aye.
Arajo, also, aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Are these companion cases, the next two? I would think so.
I don't think so. Let's just.
Two separate, two separate signs? Okay.
They are two separate signs. Technically, they're represented by the same people, but technically two different, yeah.
All right, calling case BOA 13413484965 Lansdowne Street. Violations Article 6, Section 4, other protectional conditions. Purpose continuous of an existing electronic sign seeking a zoning refusal letter as be revisal is expiring, and they're seeking further relief. All right, name and address for the record, please.
Can everybody please mute? Can everybody?
Is there anyone, anyone who's?
I've seen a hand raised, Connor.
Yep.
O'Dwyer?
Yep.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, Attorney Connor O'Dwyer from Olson Stores with a business 400 Atlantic Avenue in Boston. We're representing Orange Barrel Media LLC with respect to 49th Street, Fenway. Also here with me today are representative of Orange Barrel, Jupron, commenting for a favor. But before the board, seeking renewal of zoning relief for an existing electronic sign at the property under Section 11-7 of the code. The existing sign is located in the Lansdowne Street Entertainment District. Allow for the conditional use permit from the board, and the sign previously received a conditional use permit under Section 11-7. We're not proposing any changes or alterations to the sign. We're simply asking for a renewal of the zoning relief for another eight-year term. And we're happy to answer any questions. And you can see a picture of the sign here showing a COVID-19 PSA from the city.
And so it's both signs or just the COVID-19 sign?
So that sign behind is not ours. It's just that sign in front. And here's another picture, the sign marked from Boston Arts Academy.
Okay, and it's been dimmed at night and et cetera, et cetera?
That's correct, Madam Chair. We have an existing license agreement with the BPDA that governs the hours of operation and the brightness of the sign.
Okay. Any, let's see. Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
Great.
Okay, any, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer judgment to the board. The applicant reached out to a number of local civic associations in that area, including the Fenway Civic Association, Fenway CDC, Fenway Alliance, Art Resource Collaborative for Kids, and the Boston Arts Academy. We also circulated flyers notifying residents of the proposal. Our office is unaware of any concerns at this time. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
I'm trying to do a few raised hands here. Iris? Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Iris.
Hi, how are you? I'm Iris. I'm Iris from Family CDC, 74 Ram Street. We are in support of this Orange Barrel Media because it is a great channel for the community. They always help to publicize all the nonprofit events. We can get the message out. They help to promote diversity and cohesion. We see different messages that promote even like diversity.
Iris, they're just running so late, so I just want to give them other people.
Jeff Hampton?
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton, BPDA. We recommend approval. The only proviso that we would ask is that they continue to comply with all the regulations in 11-7 and to comply with all previous conditions of their original approval. That's all. Thank you.
And the thing is, I don't have the conditions of the original approval in front of me. Okay, so given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to approve the two provisos that they comply with the previous set of conditions that govern the use of the board and for an eight-year term. Is that?
Yes.
I believe, yeah.
And what, and the BPDA proviso, comply with regulations of 11-7?
Yeah, and for an eight-year term.
Okay, and for the record, we probably need that proviso with referencing 11-7.
That's fine.
For a second?
Second.
Second.
Alec?
Yes.
Dong?
Aye.
Regiro?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Panado?
Aye.
Arajo, also, aye. So motion carries with those provisos.
Okay, calling next case, BOA 1341355154156, Epso Street. Violations of Article 6, Section 4, other protectional conditions, and the purpose is continuing use of an electronic sign.
Good afternoon again, Madam Chair, members of the board. Just for the record, my name is Attorney Connor O'Dwyer from Olson Stores, business address of 400 Atlantic Avenue in Boston, again, representing Orange Barrel Media. Now, with respect to the property at 154 Epso Street, again, we are here seeking the renewal of the existing zoning relief for the sign for another eight-year term. And if you have any questions on the sign, I'm happy to answer. But as you can see, very similar. It's just down the end at the corner of Epso and Lansdowne Street.
Okay, and, oh, yeah, I remember when this one came through. Okay. And again, I know there were some issues with the brightness of this one. That attention has been paid to that, right?
That's correct, Madam Chair. We are keeping it at 500 Candellas per meter squared as required by the bylaw.
Okay, because of all the residential use. Any, how are the plans again, Mr. Robinson?
Just as good as the ones before.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal? Please put your name and address on the record. If you have, go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer judgment from the board. As we heard with the previous proposal, the same applicant did a lot of outreach with the local neighborhood associations such as the Fenway Civic Association, Fenway CDC, Fenway Alliance, Art Resource Collaborative for Kids, and Boston Arts Academy. We also circulated a notice with proposal to abutters within 300 feet. Our office did not hear any concerns related to this proposal. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Hampton.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton. Just repeat my comments from the last case, exactly the same. That they comply with everything. Thank you.
May I have a motion, please?
Same motion as before. Not much for approval with two provisos for continued.
Serious condition, eight years and 11-7.
Yep.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alec?
Yes.
Dong?
Aye.
Regiro?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Panado?
Aye.
Rajo, also, aye. Motion carries with those provisos.
Thank you very much.
Calling next case, BOA 13499821318, River Street in Morty 18. Violation, violations of Article 69, Section 8, usage forbidden.
Mr. Regiro, I couldn't interrupt you. Due to the Mr. Fortune leaving, we're going to take an administrative deferral.
I wanted to save you all that.
Yes, thank you for that.
Motion to defer.
Second.
Okay, Alec?
Sir, aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Regiro?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Panado?
Aye.
Rajo, also, aye. Motion carries, the date, please?
We get it. There's a song. We can do October 25.
Sorry, October when?
25.
Let's go for that 11:30.
October 25 at 11:30. Okay, see you then.
Thank you, guys.
Calling, calling next case, BOA 13511801002 Beachview Road in Ward 1. Violations to Article 53, Section 9, insufficient lot width. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient lot frontage. Article 53, Section 9, number of stories is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient front yard setback. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient side yard setback. Article 53, Section 9, sufficient rear yard setback. Article 53, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 53, Section 53-57, applicable applicability of dimensional requirements, special provisions for a corner lot, front yard setback on corner lot. And Article 53, Section 8, usage forbidden, 27T-5, East Boston High Plod applicability. And the purpose is to erect a three-story, two-family dwelling on a vacant lot.
And just, yeah, go ahead. And just a reminder, this is a six-member board. You need five members in support. So you can request an administrative deferral.
No, Madam Chair, I think we're going to choose to move forward.
Okay, let's go ahead then.
Okay, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small, business address of 21 Thompson Road. Today, we're here seeking relief to erect a two-family dwelling on a vacant lot. Zoning sub-district here is a 1,5,000. And our lot size is approximately 5,000 square feet.
Sorry, I did not hear that. How many square?
4,978 square feet is the lot size.
Go ahead.
Okay, and the violations are as follows. Lot width, the lot width requirement is 50 feet. We have 40 feet, but we are a corner lot. So the total lot frontage is 130 feet. Building height, the requirement is 35 feet, two and a half. Stories, we're proposing three stories and we're below the height with regards to feet as we are 32 feet, seven inches. Front yard setback, the requirement is 15 feet. We are proposing a modal front yard setting. Side yard violation, the requirement is 12 feet. On the left side, we have five. On the right side, we have 6.7, we're proposing 6.7. Rear yard setback, the requirement is 40 feet. We are proposing 29.5. Madam Chair, with regards to the FAR, the required FAR is 0.5. We are proposing 0.5. The units, Madam Chair, the two units are two bedrooms, two and a half bath. And approximately 1,600 square feet each. We have ground parking, or there's parking within the site for two spots per unit.
And so parking will be at the rear? Where will parking be?
Yes, it will be at the rear, accessed by an existing curb cut on Drummond Street.
And then I noticed there's a right-of-way. What is that, at the rear of the building?
Yes, the rear of the building, scroll up a little bit. The rear easement also accommodates the property at 96, which is right next door.
Okay, so, okay, thank, got it. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are fine. I think maybe some little bit of design review help will help this out a little bit. It is a corner, so I want to make sure it's addressing both streets. Feels like it's sort of turned to one side. But in terms of the proposal, I don't see an issue. I mean, the left-hand, not sure which, setback against the adjacent building is somewhat tight based on the sort of urban condition of this neighborhood. So that might be something under consideration as well.
Okay, any questions, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. It's Oliver Neets with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office hosted two of our meetings for this project, one on April 20th and the second one on May 10th. The applicant provided upon request physical plans of the project to abutters to help with communication and understanding. Abutters voiced concerns in regards to the height of the project, the amount of variances, loss of sunlight, and also character of the street. Although, we had two of our meetings for this project. Members of the community believe that there should not be anything else but a single-family home in this property. The applicant also met three times with the Orient Heights Neighborhood Council, and the membership voted to oppose the proposal. And at this time, our office will look for judgment to the board. Thank you.
Okay, and a few raised hands here. It's called the Sean Colista. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Sean Colista, 8 Marancy Avenue, East Boston, right around the corner from the development. I'd like to just go on record and say that I oppose the project. I'm asking that we only keep the single families inside the neighborhood. This is a single-family zone. In general, I'd like to just make sure that we keep single families in the neighborhood in general. I'd like to just ask that you guys please deny this project.
Okay, Gail Miller?
Yes, I want to pretty much second his sentiments, the former speaker. This is a two-family forbidden on the lot. So I, I think this should be denied with, maybe without prejudice, but they should come back and propose a one-story, if anything at all. It's going to be squeezed in, sausage into that lot. And where variances are really abusive and excessive.
Can you please, your address on the record?
Oh, sorry, yes, Gail Miller, 232 Orient Ave. I am a very active member of the Orient Heights Neighborhood Council, which has opposed this outright.
Thank you.
Okay, 781888, can you state your name and address for the record, please? Are you looking to get testimony here?
Hi, Lorraine Orlando.
Yes, we can hear you. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Lorraine Orlando. And I'm a director of butter to this project. And I live right behind the building of 96. And I own the building on the corner behind the new proposal site.
Okay.
And it's been.
Could, ma'am, can you just give us your address for the record?
My address is, I live at 12 Montmorency, but I, I own two homes directly behind the property.
Okay, okay, next caller, please.
No additional raised hands. Thank you, Madam Chair.
BPDA, Jeff, what was the BPDA's recommendation on this?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton. We recommended approval with design review. We're in agreement with Mr. Robinson that, you know, that one side can use a little TLC.
Okay, okay, so given all the information on the testimony, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
A second? Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Rajiro?
No.
Robinson?
I'm going to say no as well.
Panado?
Aye.
Raajo also in support, but motion does not carry. It's been denied. Okay, next case?
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. Have a good day.
Thank you. Mr. Rajiro, next case?
Sorry, I forgot I was.
You don't get sent back now.
Yeah, calling next case, BOA 135092, 177 Chelsea Street and Ward 1. Violations of Article 53, Section 9, unusable open space, open space insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, additional lot area insufficient. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking and loading requirements. Off-street parking is insufficient. The purpose is to change of occupancy from three to a three-unit residential dwelling.
Name and address of the record, please?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Richard Blins, 245 Sumner Street, on behalf of the petitioner. Madam Chair, this is a pre-existing non-conforming use located 3 of 2,000 District on the main street, Main Tower of Fair East Boston. Essentially, what we have here is a occupancy, legal occupancy of a commercial space at the lower level with two residential units. The goal is to legalize that occupancy to three residential units, which is a conforming use in the district. With the reconfiguration, there are some technical zoning violations that arise as a result. The first is the usable open space requirement. Even though we have an existing condition, the usable open space requirement changes. Because we are adding a residential unit, we're supposed to provide an additional 300 square feet. However, because we're not really changing anything with respect to the existing footprint of the building, that's more of a form over substance violation. The second issue involves the parking. This is, again, a pre-existing condition with ground-level commercial that is being changed to residential. Article 53 says that when you propose an additional dwelling unit in a pre-existing building without parking, you're only required to provide parking for the additional unit. So therefore, again, a technical variance for purposes of conforming with the proposed use of a three-family.
So can also, just a very quick question. So can you tell us what page we should be looking at to see what this looks like from the exterior?
Sure, if you can go to the next, I'm going to go to the next.
Because is this one of those commercial spaces where there's a bump out?
Correct. You can see here, Madam Chair, the middle shows sort of the two upper levels are setback from lower level. This is, for all intents and purposes, being utilized, probably utilized for some time as residential space. Just a little block, the occupancy has never been caught up. So this is an opportunity at this time to rehab the building. There will be a rehab of the entire building, upgraded to life safety, but obviously want to catch the correct occupancy for the building as well.
Got it, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. No question on the proposal.
Yep, it's pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward, thank you.
Questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. It's Oliver Neets with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. For this project, we hosted two of abutters meetings. There was a lot of opposition from the director of abutters during the first meeting. Originally, the abutters did not approve the addition that was being proposed, but the developer decided to work with the abutters and remove the addition. And now the abutters are in support. The applicant also met with Maverick Central Neighborhood Association. The association voted to oppose the project due to the abutters concerns. But to put in the record that this vote took place before that second abutters meeting. And at this moment, our office will like to defer our judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A second? Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Rajiro?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Panado?
Aye.
Raajo also in support, so motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. If I confirm for the record, no BPD designer view with that, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Calling next case, BOA 1358597, 3243 Washington Street and Ward 11. Violations of Article 55, Section 55-40, off-street parking insufficient. Article 55, Section 55-9, additional lot area insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, FAR excessive. Article 55, Section 9, side yard insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, rear yard insufficient. As a change of two-family to a three-family, renovate the entire structure, add rear decks, extend living area into the basement for Unit 1, and add a sprinkle. It's just name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark Lacass-Lacass-Law, 75 Arlington Street in Boston. Attorney for the owner and project proponent. This is an existing two-family structure on Washington Street and Jamaica Plain. And the proposal is to fully renovate the building and change it to three-family dwellings by utilizing some of the basement space in the rear portion of the property, which is a full walkout condition in the rear yard, as a portion of Unit 1. And then to utilize what is an existing large attic space for a portion of Unit 3 on the upper floors. The.
Please, Counselor, tell us what page we should be looking at? To understand what's happening?
Sure, the floor plans. This is the site plan advanced to, right here, stop. Oh, sorry, right here are the floor plans. So what is happening is that on the right-hand side of the page is the basement living area. It's a kitchen and living room for Unit 1. The balance of Unit 1 is half of the first level. And you see in the back, there's a deck, and I'll show you on the elevation. It's a full walkout condition, steep slope of land. Sorry, if you could stay on the floor plans for a minute. Yeah, stop. Yep. The front portion of the basement is a common utility room, which is accessible by all three units. On the street level, which is the first floor, the balance of Unit 1 and a portion of Unit 2. And then onto, onto the next level, again, it's split, it's sort of Philadelphia-style split where half a unit occupies half of each floor. Balance of Unit 2 is on the next level. And then Unit 3 is the balance of the second floor and the, what is the existing attic space. If you scroll to the next slide, it's a good.
Can you tell us what the floor-to-ceiling height in that attic space is? Is it entirely boxed out, or does it have any pitch to it on that roof?
Yep, so what you see now on the screen is the cut-through elevation. And it shows that the ceiling height in attic, it's a very large attic space, is 12'7". And that portion of the room, which is occupiable as shown in the floor plan, is the room width of 13'9", almost 14 feet across. So lots of space in that very high attic space that's not being enlarged. We're using the existing. And then you see here on the cross-section, the common basement in the front, Unit 1, living area in the back. Portion of Unit 1 on the back. Portion of Unit 2 in the front. Balance of Unit 2 on the next level. And then Unit 3, the top level, and half of the third level as well. All of the units have rear outdoor decks.
Hold on, Counselor, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans look good. It is full walkout in the rear, and there's only the common sort of living area down there anyways. Living room, dining rooms, and bedrooms are up above, so. And the attic does look sufficient, so no questions for me.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer judgment from the board. Some background information on the community process. It's underwent an extensive community process, beginning within an abutters meeting facilitated by our office. It also, the applicant received support from the Edgerton Square Neighborhood Association by way of an MOU on May 3, 2022. Additionally, this proposal receives support from the JPNC Zoning Subcommittee on July 6, 2022. At this time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, Councilor of Michael Flaherty, Councilor of York, support.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Jeff from the BPDA?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton, BPDA. We recommend an approval with proviso that no building code relief be granted, and if there are any exterior changes for design review. Thank you.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve no building code relief.
And the design review?
Well, there are no exterior changes being proposed, are there?
Right, right, okay. That's from the rear, no, okay. So, Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Rajiro?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Panado?
Aye.
Arajo is also in support, the motion carries.
Thank you kindly.
Look, okay, we're going to go and call for 11:30s. Let's call once again if anybody's requesting deferral. We have a six-member board. And very shortly, in less than half an hour, or a little over half an hour, we will have a five-member board. So if anybody is requesting a deferral, please put the address on the record first.
49 Emery Road, and sister case, 49 Emery Road.
Okay.
Mayor, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, man. Calling two cases, and BOA 1296380, and companion case, BOA 1296381. Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz, Adams and Marancy, with the business address of 168 8th Street, First Floor, South Boston. We're here to seek an administrative deferral. I'm going to defer.
I'll second here.
Okay, Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Rajiro?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Panado?
Aye.
Arajo also in support, so it's been deferred. The date, please?
Madam Chair, we can do October 25th at 11:30 a.m.
October 25th, 11:30. See you then.
I also have, have a second one, 80 through 82 Boston Street.
Okay, Mr. Rajiro?
Trying to find that one. 80 with the 80.
Last one for the.
That's a lot of reconsideration. Calling BOA 1177912, 82 to 84 Boston Street. Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz, Adams and Marancy, with the business address of 168 8th Street, South Boston, First Floor. We're here to request an administrative deferral.
Motion?
Motion to defer.
Second? Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Rajiro?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Panado?
Aye.
Raajo also in support. The date, please?
Madam Chair, we can also do October 25th at 11:30 for this one.
11, uh, on noontime?
Noontime, thank you, yeah.
Okay, so 11, uh, so sorry, 10:25 at noon. See you then.
Thank you.
Okay, calling next case, BOA 1160061, 69 Saratoga Street in East Boston. Article 53, Section 8, uses forbidden, three-family dwelling. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, FAR is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, side yard insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, rear yard insufficient. Article 32, Section 4, G-card applicability. Change of occupancy from a single-family to a three-family, legalize extension of living space into the basement with two additional units. Build new emergency escape, construct new exterior stairway, take kitchen out from basement. Name and address for the record, please. Anyone on for 69 Saratoga Street? 9 Saratoga Street.
Marie, is that you? That's the only one here.
Well, want me to just move to the next one? Well, want me to just move to the next one?
Yes, please.
Okay, calling next case, calling BOA 1267825, and companion case, BOA 1267823, 295 Webster Street. Violations to Article 53, Section 9, usable open space insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, FAR is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, additional lot area insufficient. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking and loading requirements insufficient. And that was for 29, that's change of occupancy from a single to a three-family and expand living space into basement for an additional unit. Then the other violations are Article 53, Section 9, rear yard insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, side yard insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, building height excessive in feet. Article 53, Section 52, roof structure restrictions. Article 27T-5, East Boston, IPod applicability. And that's for the roof deck. Name and address for the record.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Aaron D'Angelo, 40 Ever Street, East Boston, Mass. And on behalf of Mary Lou and Fernando, the owners.
Tell us why you were deferred the last time?
It was a last-minute deferral based on new information that there was a butter in the rear that was in opposition, so we took the time to try to reach out. We were not successful.
You were not successful. So talk to us about this change of occupancy with the understanding that the board is not, does not look kindly to living space in the basement.
Sure. It's a familial home of multi-generation, and this space is to be inhabited by their son. It does have a grade change such that not just the four windows, but additionally with the rear means egress is at full height in the rear of the property. It actually stands as a two-family as a certificate of occupancy. The zoning code refusal mistakenly cites it as a one-family.
Okay, and how is the third dwelling unit created?
The third dwelling unit would be a garden-level unit. Yep, if you could scroll, there's a single plan for the garden-level unit, and it is a studio of approximately 680 square feet. Full means of egress from the back with a full-height door, and then the access is through the front doors as it is standing now. So there's no envelope change.
And what's the floor-to-ceiling height down there?
Seven foot six, except for one spot where there's ductwork that comes across the ceiling.
And utilities are separate, separate access to utilities?
There is not separate access. There will be separate utilities.
Okay, for a unit like, an independent unit to be approved, utilities need to be accessed separately, not through the unit?
Reasonable request. We're certainly open to making that floor plan work accordingly. It can be done.
Okay, and tell us about those decks, the deck addition, the roof deck?
Of course. The roof deck largely sits on the rear of the roof structure. From the very crown of Sumner Street, as you start to come down, you can just see the HVAC unit that services that top-floor unit where the owners live, Mary Lou and Fernando themselves. And the deck will be behind that. So it's very much out of sight lines of neighbors and a butters. It does have a headhouse. We do have flat roofs, so we're in a space where the headhouse is the only way we can really access it, and it will tie into the existing second means of egress.
And there's no possibility of accessing that deck through extension of the rear stairs?
It actually is that. So the rear stairs are only to that top-floor roof line now. And in order to get access to the roof deck, the proposed roof deck, we need to build that headhouse to do so.
I see. Okay, got it.
It's just a hatch right now, so the hatch will be turned into full stair, full-height access.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
I mean, the plans are generally fine. You know, there's not much information on the lower-level unit from the standpoint of the grade and natural grade. I do see a full door out, but I don't exactly understand where the grade is associated with that. If it's sort of like down and you go back up again or something, but I just don't have any real information on that assessment. And I guess I did have a question on the rear. This is a fairly new building, or no?
It is. I built it for Mary Lou and Fernando.
Okay.
So they had two familial homes there on Mary Lou's side.
So was there a proviso for the roof deck not to have a headhouse in it when you originally?
We didn't...
Because it does, I see the issue because the rear stairs are enclosed.
Right.
So it's harder to create a roof hatch, but I mean, I just didn't know if, it's a little tricky.
That was part of our BRA design review at the time, to enclose the rear stair.
So you did not do this as a right. It came to this board?
Yes, we've been to the board for the original demo of the old structures to build this new structure for them.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I'm just confused about a number of things. The sections seem to show a uniform grade. That was a dotted line. There isn't really an elevation that shows a sloping grade, but I...
I can speak to that. Yeah, that's accurate. I can speak to that. So the driveway is what precluded us to, if you scroll to the site plan, you'll see there's a retaining wall just to the left of the one-car parking spot, and that retaining wall holds the grade up. So in the pictures, it doesn't present that way, but it is, in fact, what happens. The door is full-height and out to the ground level of their property, and it does not step back up. It just egresses out the alleyway. So on the far left of their property, that access that walks down beside their retaining wall, beside, to the left of their driveway, grade drops significantly such that in the back, it's a full-height door.
So the driveway slope, the driveway slopes down?
The driveway's flat, and that, we built that up with the retaining wall. That's why you don't see, when you look at the side of the property, that's why you don't see the grade change, because the driveway is built up to accommodate that one car.
Right, I get that. And I still don't understand, explain, or maybe Mr. Robinson can do it, the headhouse, why there's a need for a headhouse off the enclosed stairs? I don't get that. And there's not a drawing that was made that clear.
May I speak to that?
Yeah, sure.
So if we scroll to the headhouse depiction, if you could do that, please, the rear set of stairs.
Tell us which set of plans. Is that, is this the right one?
Yep, that's it right there. Yep. So on the lower two sections, you can see the bird's-eye view of the second means of egress for all the units, all the way down and out. Those stairs, under this proposal for a roof deck, would continue up into this top-right corner depiction, which is the headhouse, that is the de minimis needed to access the roof deck area. As of right now, those stairs lead to a hatch.
Enclosed staircase, it's an enclosed staircase where the door leads me out to the roof deck.
That's correct.
Okay, so that's not really what I think we would consider a headhouse. Okay, that's fine. And it's in the rear anyway, so it's not visible from the street?
It is not. It is at the very rear of the property line.
Okay.
And not sealed.
Not to nuke this even harder, but on the basement level, I mean, obviously, the grade is a little bit quirky. Is there the ability to get real windows down there? Because in the elevations, it only shows tiny little windows high. It seemed to show...
The windows currently are small. We would be working larger windows in at least on the left and right of the property where we could do window wells. Certainly, the one at the very left rear elevation of the property can be a bigger window if we were to obtain this approval.
And one final question. Given that this is a relatively new building, how come you didn't ask for all of these items during the original approval?
Mary Lou and Fernando didn't originally have this vision, so we built out their full vision at that time, and it's been a dream of Fernando's to get a roof deck, but it just wasn't in the cards at the time. The additional dwelling unit became a familial, you know, desire. Their son would live there.
I'll add one more, just because it was interesting. When I looked at this in Google Earth, it appears your headhouse is going to block your view of the water. I hope you looked at that. So I don't want you to go through the whole thing, and then you have a headhouse blocked. I think you could probably figure out another access point, but I'll leave it to you to make sure that the clients are happy with that.
It's accurate. It blocks an airport view off to the right there. You'll see the skyline of Boston.
Okay, so...
You have to make a glass headhouse.
Yep.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Natalia Benitez with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant and I were hosted in a butters meeting on April 14. No butters in attendance for the meeting. The applicant also met with the Jeffrey's Point Neighborhood Association late last year. The association voted in support and no concerns were raised. I did receive one letter of opposition regarding this project, and at this time, we related to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Hello, I'm sure I do have one here. Mary Lou Shire, are you looking to give testimony here?
Yes, I am. I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so I am the butter. They built the property six inches from my lot line. I had cancer when they built it, so I never received...
Can you say the name and address for the record?
Should we draw on 45... Yep, 45 Jeffrey Street. This got deferred. Nobody has ever reached out to me, nor did I get any information despite the fact that they have my proper address in Andover for the record. So I gladly would have gone to the neighborhood. No one has reached out to me. They built this property six inches from the lot line. I had a lawyer who said they needed to build a wall back in 2007. They built the wall, then they took the wall down. The rear, they already built the apartment illegally in the basement. There's someone living there now, and if I put up a wall, they wouldn't be able to open their door. This is so, so close to the lot line. It's literally ridiculous. And now I get water in my basement, which I'm not even dealing with that. But this shouldn't even be a two-family, let alone a one-family. And as a one-family, how it was allowed to be built literally six inches from the lot line, I have no idea. I did a lot, a lot of legwork. I came down a 10-10 Mass Ave. I submitted the agreement from the lawyer, which they defaulted on. I submitted the plans, which now, and pictures, showing the illegal apartment that they built and are using anyway. And I, you know, I've done everything possible to try to correct this now that I feel better, and I'm very, very upset. I took off of work the first time. Now I'm taking off of work the second time. I have hours left that I can take off of work, and I just don't understand. I lose that. I don't even understand why this can be a two-family, let alone a three-family, and why they didn't have any violations with someone living there illegally in an apartment that doesn't belong there, where if he opens his door, he needs to enter my property to leave down my alleyway.
Thank you.
You are the property owners, so please tell us about that short interference.
Yes. Hi, my name is Mary Lou McDonough. I own the property. My husband is next to me, Fernando Fernandez. I've been on this property for 83 years. There was two three-family houses that Milo is on. We have neighbors. My brothers and sisters were all born on this property. We have this, the house that is here now, where there was a three-family house here, where the parking lot is, was a two-family house. So I had two houses. We have, we have a 293 and a 295 address. This house was a three-family before we bought it. It was empty.
Okay, okay, hold on, hold on. Okay. Jeff, what was the BPDA's recommendation on it? Do you remember?
Uh, yes, we recommended approval with design review, but I don't think we really need design review on the headhouse that's at the back of the property.
Okay.
Excuse me, Ms. Adaro. I would like to please finish, if I may.
Yes, please have it short.
Yes, my son lives in the basement and not written off the...
I'm sorry, Mary Lou, I'm sorry I didn't get your last name, but...
My name is Mary.
I'm gonna hold off, please, because you have been represented for the bulk of this presentation by Aaron, so we get, we have an understanding of what is being proposed. So, okay, does, does, does the, just, do any board members need any additional information before we make a decision?
I'm sorry. No, go ahead. I do have, I mean, go ahead, go ahead. No, I am questioning if the act, I'm looking at the survey, and I mean, it does look like the building is so close to the property line, if the egress is out of the left-hand side, which it is, ups and stairs. It does appear that it's crossing into, off of the property, I guess is what. And I guess if you can't egress out of your own property, I think there's potentially an issue here that I, I don't know if we have enough information to totally weigh in on it at this point, but I don't know. That's a question, I guess, from me.
Aaron, can you clarify that?
Yeah, the egress at that rear-left corner lands on a very skinny, and it's not six inches. We had George Collins of Boston Survey handle this for us, and it was very contentious at the time. And we ended up with somewhere substantial enough for a human to land, to turn, and come up that alleyway. For me to represent the amount of that dimension at this point in time would not be appropriate. I'd have to dig deeper if you need that answer. Certainly, this was an issue when we built the property, and we addressed it then, both with Boston Survey and building inspectors, because we had permits in hand and eventually, obviously, built this and got our certificate of occupancy.
But that wasn't an egress because there wasn't a unit down there, correct?
It's an e, so the egresses all tie into that staircase.
Oh, all the way down from above, I see.
Yeah, that gets out, you know, top unit, first-floor unit, that gets everybody out. So I don't mean to say that your point is moot. There's certainly a new unit we're discussing. That said, there are two units that were egressed this way since certificate of occupancy of the building.
So, can you hear me still? Because there was a lawyer that said a wall needed to be built, and someone took the wall down, and if the wall's there, no one, no one could get out, and it is six inches from the property line.
Okay, you know what? I'm having, I don't know how to dispose of this case because obviously, there's, there's, there's issues that we cannot address as a...
Yeah, it's like beyond...
Yeah, so for the things that we can address, we're looking at two things. A change of occupancy from a two-family to a three-family, with, with a separate, not an extension of living space into the basement, but a unit in the basement. And second is the roof deck addition. Which one, it feels to me that the roof deck is easier to deal with. May I have a motion on the roof deck?
I'll make a motion over the roof.
I'll second that, Eric.
Okay, Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Rajiro?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Panado?
Aye.
Raouge also in support, so motion carries. So the sticking point now is Act 295 Webster Street. The question before us is, since this is a recent construction, do we support the conversion from a two-family to a three-family? Because there seem to be a lot of technical issues related to that, and even though, you know, you've made the strong argument, Mr. Diagnow, about the use of that space for a family member, the fact is that the egress seems to be very tight, and we just want to make sure that the, that, that each lot, each family, each unit is supported entirely on their lot. So may I have a motion on 295 Webster Street?
Can, can I make a motion to defer for more information? Because I still don't think we have clarity on the grade and the windows and access.
There's a motion for deferral. Is there a second?
Second.
Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Rajiro?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Panado?
Aye.
Arajo also in support, the date, please?
Madam Chair, it's on. We can do October 25th at 11:30.
Okay, and Mr. Robinson, Mr. Olick, be specific about the information we need to make a valid decision on this.
Glad to for your time.
Thank you.
No, 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 hold on.
I think we need, we need more information on the actual natural grade and grade around the rear where the living is being proposed. The survey is blurry at best. I think we need an enlarged plan of that egress point and the adjacent property line to understand that more clearly. So I think if we have those two bits of information, I think we could be able to weigh in on the lower level unit. And I think even maybe a site visit, to be honest. Because it's very confusing exactly how this is all working out, but that's a different issue.
Okay, so got it, Aaron?
Yes.
Okay, next case, please.
Glad to.
Sorry, so Five Magnolia Place is still on, right?
Yes.
BOA 1280423, Five Magnolia Place in Ward 13. Violation to Article 50, Section 29, Lot Area Insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, Floor Area Ratio Excess. Article 50, Section 29, Unusable Open Space Insufficient. Usable Open Space Insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, Side Yard Insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, Lot Area Insufficient. Article 50, Section 43, Off-Street Parking Remindance. Maneuverability Tandem Space. Article 10, Section 1, Limitation of Off-Street Parking Areas. Parking areas on the side shall be separated five feet from the side lot line. The purpose is to convert a single family to a three-story, two-family dwelling, replacing existing foundation, expanding household print as shown in the plans. Name and address for the record.
So please, before we proceed, just to let you know, this is a six-member board. You need five members in support. So you can request a deferral. And if you decide to proceed, please tell us why you would defer the last time.
I would like to proceed. My name is Akash Lala, homeowner at Five Magnolia Place. I had to defer last time because I had to make the, I had to show the proposed tandem parking drawing on the plot plan. That was one of the feedbacks that I received.
Okay, so please go ahead and tell us what you're proposing to do, start from scratch, because we've seen a few projects since you were last here.
Yes, so I have a single family home and I'd like to convert it into a two-family home. How I propose to do that is by adding one story to the existing dwelling in addition to a, an addition of 24 by 17 feet, which is also three stories. There'll be a flat roof with a roof deck on there.
Who is your architect?
I drew my plans. And then the engineer I worked with reviewed my plans.
What's that on the roof?
Oh, that's a head house.
A head house, is there an elevator in there?
No, it's by stairs. It's owner, accessible only by the owner. And the owner unit is the second floor and third floor, my unit.
Oh, you know what, I remember this now. Okay, with that roof deck, yeah, that was a sticking, a sticking point for me. Okay, so.
Oh, I just have to mention the BPDA recommended.
I don't, I'm not interested. I just want to know.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so, so tell us about the parking and how did you do the parking?
Um, so it's tandem parking. I don't have enough room on the street for parking, for full-time parking. So I'm proposing tandem parking, so it's back-to-back on the driveway. And that can be shown, seen on the, on the plot line right there.
Seeing, so what's the, so what's the, the dimension is 11 foot and 11 feet to the property line?
Yeah.
Without any screening or anything, okay? Right next to your stairs, okay? Is Mr. D'Amico still on?
Madam Chair, I am still on.
Okay, so I guess this is what the applicant recently submitted, which, which we had requested the last time it was deferred. So this is a time for you to comment on it?
Yes, I think space number two is just a little bit too tight because you have about maybe a foot and a half to open the door. And I just have to go on record as being opposed to this parking design.
Okay, okay. May I ask the homeowner, is this an existing code cut there or is this a new code cut?
Existing.
Okay, got it, okay?
Existing driveway, yeah.
Okay, no, I get it, okay. So, and then let's talk about the extension, the third floor extension of that, that space in the attic. How big is that space on the third floor?
Uh.
Of the second unit?
Oh, the, so the, are you referring to living space?
Yep.
So the second floor is 824 square feet and the third floor is 713 square feet.
And is that the space that opens onto a deck?
Correct, the third floor is, you follow up the stairs and then you get to the deck.
That's a, it's like a 1600 square foot unit, okay?
Yeah, that's unit two, yeah.
Yeah, okay, and so is this the top floor, top unit, the top floor?
Um, what we're seeing right there?
Yeah.
Yes, that is the, correct, that's the third floor. And then that's the roof deck.
Oh, so that roof deck, can you scroll down just a little bit? So, so, okay, so that, the closet and, so that's basically a head house then?
Correct.
Eric, Mark, what do you guys think?
Wait, but this is existing or?
No, it's proposed.
I thought he said the head house is already there.
No, 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 this is a, this is a small sort of two-family or, sorry, two-story kind of mansored building. And he's proposing to basically take the roof off, it looks like, and add a third floor. I think the confusion a little bit, at least as I'm looking at this, I mean, yes, there's a, there's a head house, which obviously we're not for head houses. There's a direct access from the third floor, which I understand. I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand the access point because there's a lot of stairs on the exterior of it. And I guess you're trying to not, because the second unit on the second floor, you're accessing through an exterior stair at the driveway side, correct?
Yeah, there's two exterior stairs on the road for the second unit.
So, I mean, that stair cannot be inside the unit? I mean, at 1600, it seems like there should be plenty of room within the building to access the second floor. Is that not something you've looked, can you look at that maybe, or is that something you put down?
Um, I, it would, so living space, it would certainly cut into my living space and it would certainly cut into the first floor living space. And I think that's, that's very important to keep.
But it would provide the additional space for, maybe to help with the parking constriction and the fact that you're.
Yeah, I.
I think there just needs a little bit of work here. I appreciate your being a homeowner architect, but I think there's just things that aren't really working necessarily. So like from my point of view, I don't necessarily have a problem with the additional floor, actually. I have a problem with the head house. I just think there's some things that aren't quite working in terms of the access and then the site plan. So it needs some work, so, you know, I don't know if that's a fair to push onto the BPDA for design review, but I guess that's going to be a whole other thing to discuss.
Maybe what we need is a final deferral and to please hire an architect to kind of think it through, okay? Because engineers look at it differently. Architects understand all the code and other issues, which might in the long run just help you, okay? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer. I'll second that motion.
Okay, Olick?
Aye.
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Regiro?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Panado?
Aye.
Arajo also in support, the date?
We can do October 25th. If the applicant thinks that's enough time, would ever take a look at the plans again?
Yeah.
October 25th.
Will that be enough time for you?
Um, yes, that would be enough time. And just to clarify, it's the stairs on the back, is that what?
Stairs on the side stairs. I think just the access in general for this. And then you heard Mr. D'Amico on the.
Well, I can propose, I can do an enclosure. Is that, would that be sufficient?
Um, you know, we can, we, you know, we can't have design conversations right now. You know, just hire somebody to just kind of think it through, okay? So we have that last case, 69 Saratoga Street. Can we call that into the record?
Yeah, calling pick case BOA 116006169 Saratoga Street. Name and address for the record.
Mr. Ambassador, any raised hands?
No.
May I have a motion, please, for denial without prejudice?
Motion denied without prejudice.
Second.
Okay, so just for the record, it is now 210, this.
You need to do, you need to roll call.
I know, I will get to that. It's now 220. This project was scheduled for 11:30. The motion was for denial without prejudice. It was moved in second. Olick?
Aye.
Dong?
Aye.
Regiro?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Panado?
Aye.
Arajo also, so it's been denied without prejudice. Thank you, everybody. Sorry for the extra-long day. Enjoy your lunch.
Thank you.
Or dinner.
Recording stopped.